It is.
There you go.
Florence Park.
Florence.
It's Florence Park, yeah.
It is six oh three on November fifth, twenty twenty four. Uh for Citrus meeting of the select board. Do we have? A motion to call the meeting to order and accept the agenda.
I'll move.
Move Vanessa Agerson, second in by Mr. Gilmore, listen favor.
Aye.
The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a proper manner, even when there's disagreement. We evaluate the participation of our community among all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities. If they're welcome and respected, we ask our committee members, all who are speaking, to commit to the standards to support and respect our lovely community. Uh I don't see any walk-ins. So we will start with your report of the town again straight.
Good evening, uh in light of a heavy agenda, I'm going to set somewhat highlights that a difference in what I did yesterday. Uh first, I'll remind people tonight's election night. Polls close at eight o'clock, and we'll always glad to stop seeing you in Hampshire, including the total ads on TVs after tonight. Uh which one I remind people of, if you've got a mail ballot, please do not bring it to the polls and have to be returned here at the town hall. You can go in the office or the Dropbox Friday at eight o'clock, I have no Catholic Sabbath submission we got today. So please, uh bring your ballots here if you have mailed ballots. Our reminder of Veterans Day, that Veterans Day is Monday, November eleventh. Uh town offices will be closed. Once again, Citrus Post one forty four, provide a free turkey lunch to all Citrus veterans and one guest. Uh the extra guest is twenty dollars, the veteran is free. They do need a count, so please let them know by November seventh. By emailing Bob Callanan. The reservation is at commander@citruspost144 dot O. Our call gene at six one seven eight four two oh oh nine two. Space is limited, so please get your reservations in early. The ceremony will start uh on November eleventh at ten forty five at the flagpole behind the senior center. Right for salute, playing a tap, singing the National Anthem, identification by the chaplain. And they'll move inside where senior uh senior center, sorry, where E W M I A, where members will be done. Some speeches by notable people will be heard, there's a cash bar for beer, wine, and liquor. Milk, consistent salad, roast turkey, stuffing, mashed potato, butternut squash, cranberry sauce, and gravy. Zero will be provided by Post one forty four, and Citrus chapter, the soldier's song, and voices will play sixties and seventies music after the meal. Uh the Voyage Restaurant, I'm Mark, will be catering this event again and donating food as they always do, so a special thanks to the owner Keith O'Callahan for helping them out. Please patronize the Voyage and thank them for supporting Citrus Veterans. So the new stuff, uh we're going to full buy supplier of the court paint for the tennis court project, but they will not warranty the application of their paint product after the first November. They do have a cold weather product that they've had a couple visions with, the other places that applied. So we will put down the court surface, which is a concrete slurry. Uh that should be going on this week. The courts will have temporary lines placed on when the slurry is installed and complete. At that point, the courts will be playable, we'll be able to finish everything and have the courts playable for the spring. We will keep them closed for the winter, we'll open them up for the Tennessee season in the spring. Then the final painting will take place when the weather forecast meets the parameters for their application of their paint. Uh we're all pretty upset about that, I know general contractors upset about that. But we really felt that we didn't want to risk it if there was a problem someplace else and the courts would be playable. So we will go ahead and make the courts play as well under the final paint application in the spring. Uh tonight, Citrus Water Department will be conducting repairs on a leaking main on Cold Parkway. This is proactive repair being done to minimize service disruption to residents and businesses in the surrounding area. It's also being done to provide uh to avoid great destruction of service at the main when it fall. In addition, this work will allow for less disruption that will happen when we do a larger project next spring. They did the work today on Notice Place, they dug the hole, they got all the machines, pots ready. Tonight, between two AM and seven AM, the water services on Front Street will be shut off. We did posting, we did our email blast, and we did reverse nine one one. Uh Ken and I also stopped all the coffee shops down, let them know they might have a problem, they open in the morning. Uh we're hoping to have the water turn back on before seven AM, but between uh Jericho Road and Brook Street, the water will be off starting at two o'clock this morning. The other update we have is we've started to work on the repair of the seawall on Ocean Side Drive. Uh rather than cut the seawall next to the house where we were gonna do it last time, we're actually gonna exit, enter the beach down the Ocean Side entrance, further down the beach. That's an easier entrance for us, and also will prevent us from having to make that entry every day because we have to put sand on the beach. It will wash away every other bus list to make it easy for us to get in. We also think it's gonna access, uh improve the access to the beach in the summer months because it'll take out that kind of right, left hand turn to go in there, so. Uh that's started, they're working out there today. They'll stop that project, it'll take a couple weeks when they get it all done. And it's weather dependent and tide dependent, so they'll work on that as quickly as they can. That's what I have, it's new.
Any questions? Karen Canfield is asking if we have any other meeting until we get this.
Yeah, she's on her way. I agree with you on the painting of the court. I've seen too many projects where Cleveland worked outside and the coatings failed. So it'll stay within your parameters, and it will be a beautiful project once completed.
And the fact that we can play on it.
No doubt, honey.
That that's good for us and will let us do the project next month as well, Nick wants to talk about later on.
Quick question, what was the utilization like this weekend at the transfer station with Cohasset? Utilizing it, did we notice any?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I was in twice, it was busy all times I was there. Uh also on Sunday, there was a long line on Sunday at the shack. I talked to the guys both days, I said it was pretty busy, we don't have the numbers, just the time check though.
And for clarification, Cohasset is reimbursing us.
Cohasset, they add.
There was a little confusion that I heard that folks didn't think we were getting reimbursed for it.
Yeah, Cohasset will will cover whatever cost Cohasset used in the transfer station. Okay, so. Once we have those locked together, we'll send them all and they'll pick here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was a nice way to do that.
Yeah, you're brilliant.
But also recognize we did increase rates, so I didn't want the folks to think that we're giving something over frequently, just increased it.
That was a good point.
Good, yeah. Although, um. All right, we we can now move to. Chief. Now, computer aided dispatch, is that right, computer, okay.
Right.
CAD.
What do you think?
What are you?
Good, thank you, how are you?
Oh, we got RMS. And I have so many.
So there's.
Alphabet suits.
Alphabet.
Is it going to be on mighty Swiftman?
Yeah, no.
So yes.
Should we make them name it R?
I.
Just say it.
I don't know.
Just.
Just coincidence, I don't know. Uh so so this is the kind of continuation of a project that we started a couple years back. We got approval at town meeting uh for the funding. And we've been in a holding pattern pretty much as kind of technology, the landscape has evolved throughout the Commonwealth in terms of kind of the next step and the direction to go. So we'll try to be patient to watch how things would essentially evolve. Um and we feel like we're at a good time now to jump in and do this. So CAD and records management, so CAD is computer aided dispatch, so that's basically where your call starts. So if somebody calls into the nine one one center, they're safe to go in. Dispatchers who are working are using the CAD, they're entering the call in, they're getting information back as far as fire hydrant locations, cautions. Um it's gonna tell them things like what type of apparatus they should be sending, uh what sector people are. So that's what the dispatchers are using, and that's how a call starts. That's the kind of CAD side, and then that information flows through to the records manager. So if something's gonna be further reported on the call, police officers are gonna go through and do an arrest report, an accident report, something, somebody's house is broken into, they're gonna document all that, that's what the records management system is doing. Uh the fire department uses a different software, um this will basically feed. So it's still front ends on the CAD. But then this is going to, police department will use the mark forty three, which is what we're proposing. Records management, fire department uses an existing application called Station Sparks. So this will feed that, which is the same way that it works today, so they can they can.
They they'll talk to each other and.
Exactly, so that was kind of one of the requirements that we looked at, um when we kind of went through the different vendors. And they said, the landscape in Massachusetts is interesting as far as the different software vendors that are out there. Um it is interesting when you kind of look at a national landscape because it is very regional. There are regional players, there are national players. Um but what happens in Massachusetts is not necessarily the same as what happens in Maryland or Ohio. Things work differently because of the way CGIS, sort of criminal justice information system, happens individually state by state, R and B. So we have to really be careful about what we're working on. Uh so have the fire department involved with this, um a group with the police department, Mike Mattello of the IP department to kind of go through and look at all of these different events.
Come on. We are urgent for people at home, we uh we started at six today, and I think there must have been some I'll take full responsibility for this communication that uh folks didn't know.
She's still on point, yeah. Sorry, folks.
No problem, special.
Yeah.
We're on the first item.
Wait.
Yeah. So on the first items, we have.
Okay, oh, good.
We're talking CAD RMS. CAD is the computer assisted dispatch.
Yes, yes. I tried to use it in Scrabble where you're over.
An RMS record management system.
Yes. The multi-page document.
What we do.
Very much.
So one of the, one of the key things for for us with this is that this will be cloud native. And what we did is looking at forward looking as far as disaster recovery. I don't know, no awareness at all. Uh so you know, that started to narrow down what would we do with our software choice. Being able to migrate our existing data, uh really having a software member that were part of that. Forward looking, as opposed to being kind of strapped down to some legacy technology. So with all of that, um in looking, like I said, like what the landscape was, we kind of looked at different companies that we started to then drill down, we opened one up with four that were kind of in top mix. Uh and then from that company, Mark Williams, really votes to the top. There's some other departments around here transitioning to those uh to that solution. I think we're going to be kind of in the forefront of what that is, but not so bleeding edge that uh we're taking the aggressive work. Based on conversations about that. With other chiefs, uh the vendors, with CGIS, it seems like we're kind of making the the smart choice here. We're hoping to pull them on forty three.
It's pretty smart. I believe, I am shocked and I love the fact that they're able to again, talk and interact with the fire department as a new system, amazing. Um and then this, I'm assuming you'll be able to kind of extract some good data out of some of this information, kind of.
Yeah, that was one of the big things for us is data analytics. Uh right now, our analytics are, it's challenging uh to be able to extract data the way we can want to be able to do it. Uh so this system, right out of the box, there's a lot that we can do with it. Uh but well, we have access to the backend data, uh so that we can customize things further and fully help. So that was definitely a key requirement for us, is being able to really look at things and get better situational awareness, get better reporting, look at trends. Um and this is though, I think, provides that ability.
All right, I'll I'll go there.
I just, I just, I just see from the backup information here that mostly everybody else is not cloud native.
Correct.
Which is a new, it's outlined cloud native, but cloud data with highest level of security, which is very important, so I think you're making a good decision. Just by looking at the way it's spread.
That's, I mean, you focusing on one of the key things, this solution was built from the beginning for the cloud, as opposed to some of the other solutions that they have put into the cloud, but they're truly not native. Uh in this solution, they get into a lot of things that we highlighted somewhere in documentation, as far as the level of security that they have. Um so as you know, Mike Mazzello, huge on the security aspects, um and that for us, but we wanted to make sure that we hit all of those benchmarks for him. Uh and he was really, I think, happy with what this does.
Did you have additional questions?
No.
I just had, I have a question on the the length of the contract, since the last, I think the last time you said you had a system like this, it was twenty seventeen. So is it typical that you do a three year contract for this?
So the three year contract is what's typical, and I don't want to step on anything to Nancy, but that's typically what we do on this. Um the current vendor that we use right now, which is IMC, we purchased in two thousand and eight. Uh and we have done annual renewals with them every year since. So this initial contract covers for the first three years. Um and then from there, we'll have annual renewals to do subject to a recreation care.
So we can do annual renewals, we wouldn't have to put it out to bid again, so I guess that's my concern if we're gonna invest this amount of money in it. I would hope that the like annual renewals would be similar in cost to the like annual and not come to year five and it's double. But.
So to that point, this is fantastic segue, so we have one other contract document right now that we was just kind of going back and forth on. One of those things that we agreed to with them was to put escalation clause on there.
Gotcha.
Tell them that they're five percent yearly, so if you don't hit it with
Okay.
all of a sudden a twenty five percent increase.
What's gonna be fine?
So so we went back and forth, they got, they agreed to do that, so we want to be cautious of that.
Okay.
That was something to get in, to tell them in conversation that uh, you know, he's a, the one who's concrete back to him, was, we're running all that.
Well, and then one other question. Is there opportunity if you're to do beyond maintenance, if you had upgrades that you wanted to do, like you mentioned data, that you're reporting, to have a different functionality in the what we're purchasing?
As far as building out different components to it.
Yeah, I was thinking, and you 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 know you're interested in data, if there is reporting that you're not seeing, but that you'd like them to kind of loop in, is there an opportunity for us to do that as well?
Because we'll have access to the backend, it's essentially a sequel database. From that, we can build out and, you know, I can, I can sit down and say, great, this is how I want to party the data and build out sequence segments to do that and extract data and build out reports.
Okay.
So if we wanted to do something where we hired them out on a big time material, we could certainly do that. Uh but because we're having access to the backend, we really become self sufficient to be able to do that. Um but like I said, what they have, just out of the box, is incredibly robust and powerful and strong on things.
Good.
It's great.
Yeah, oh, um, I could come in chief. Will we be collecting any data or information that we are currently collecting using this system?
Um so yes and no. Uh one of the big things that we'll be doing much, much better is collecting location data. Uh so right now, the location data that we were collecting is really already acquitted. This is much more like, we're gonna be loading in the accessory data maps used as we, so left, we want to do much more.
GPS.
Yeah, much more precise in terms of that. Um as far as other data, like I think a lot of it are standard data points that are defined by registry. Um CGIS, I don't know, there are good things that came out with Police Reform as far as different data fields that we have to collect. So a lot of that is driven in that way. Um but the way that we're able to pull the information out is going to be one of the things that we'll change in that. But for us, and I know the fire department is really super excited, because the location data is going to be a huge, huge thing for us.
Thank you, and one other question, a sort of general question. Um does this expose us or other organizations who are using these more and more and more advanced systems um more vulnerable to freedom of information requests that could be considered recomplicated? And you know, what what do we do about those things?
So for us, I mean, if there's a FOIA request, we're gonna have to comply with it. Um however the data is, we're kind of captured, you don't have to produce anything new necessarily, I mean. Um but I I don't think it exposes us necessarily in a different way. Obviously, the security piece as far as exposure that way, you want to make sure we're most protected. Um but I think one of the things that this will look at doing, it'll allow us to, in some cases, respond better to requests, because again, how, figuring out some of the immediate issue right now might want to be a five step process where this will be relieved in a single step or two. Um so my hope is that that's going to help us in that way.
Well, because I know a few years ago, we had a citizen, and it probably happened more than I know as a citizen reflect the information about uh the types of stops that we need to make, and the types of arrests and citations, et cetera, and it was, it was a very difficult process. And not satisfying to be honest with anyone, because it was kind of like, you know, it was all handwritten and and everything had to be gone through manually. So I'm assuming that this makes it easier to standardize and to.
And pull information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely one of the expectations we have of this, this being able to technically, you know, it's wonderful that you can enter a whole bunch of information and you can't pull it out in a useful way. Um you know, that's that's the less helpful for sure. Um I think one of the things that this gives us the ability to is like, this is a a bleakly project. Uh so this is gonna take us seven, eight months to go to the border, we're gonna go live by July first, and that's aggressive. Uh but this is an opportunity to take a step back and look at all the ways that we're categorizing things, classifying information, pointing anything. So when you think about it, this last happened basically in two thousand and eight. So a long time ago, and at a time when the last system we had was was a step above, well. It was antiquated, for sure, so.
Carving paper.
Yeah, so so this is an opportunity for us to take some of these lessons learned over nearly twenty years. Um and hopefully put ourselves in that direction.
Okay, thank you. And seven, eight months sums, quick, gee.
I would like it to be seven or eight weeks.
Well.
It takes time.
Around here. Thank you. Um so to answer the security question, that was one of my main concerns. Like, exactly where I'm at. Um Leah, and um would we, uh these are more questions for our Nancy and Jim, so this is all for free cash, the funding?
It was, yes, it was.
Okay. And um would we need to make the motion subject to uh accepting an escalation clause, or is that?
No, not for the contract that's in front of you.
Okay.
The escalation clause would be three years, that one.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Jim.
Great, good questions. You good?
Yeah.
Okay, any motion?
Move toward the contract. Um to award a contract to inside public sector, the purchase of mark forty three, had RMS solution, not fifty three hundred and eighty four, four hundred and thirty six, and four three cents.
Seven cents, and uh you can feel a lot of those in favor.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We have, thank you very much. Do you want better data? Seven months. Better days ahead, fabulous. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Hope for the rest of the, have a good evening, thank you. Great. Break along. Nick, uh let's talk about.
Hello, everybody.
Nice donation.
Yes, so uh we have a rather large donation coming to us uh to the Recreation Department in honor of Cody David Sullivan. Cody tragically and unexpectedly passed away on September twenty eighth uh this year. beloved son Pete and Jean Sullivan, loving brother Molly Sullivan of Citrus. His father Pete is our current lifeguard director, uh and his mother Jean worked for, has worked for various departments um in town, including recreation, veterans, and uh. Uh Cody was uh an incredibly lively and adventurous person, he had grown up being actively involved in many sports programs. Uh and then Cody's daughter and his family and friends would like to dedicate and donate his memorial fund to the town uh Citrus Recreation Department, and hopes to continue Cody's love for connecting. His family and friends created a GoFundMe page for the memorial donations, and as of today, the total amount uh is up to eleven thousand, six hundred, six hundred and eighty dollars. Uh we've also received numerous checks that have come in. Uh they were mailed into town hall here, and that totals uh thirteen hundred dollars. So the grand total so far is at twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. And so we we do believe that amount will continue to grow over these next few weeks. Uh obviously, we'd like to thank the Sullivan family and all of Cody's uh family and friends for their generous and gracious donation to the town of Cody's family. They'd also keep them in our thoughts and prayers that they go through this thing.
I mean, um yeah, for the whole Sullivan family, we need to have that connection to the town, part of that. Loving all different types of sports, um. So. So very thoughtful way, uh I think, as my real, so we're very, very uh thankful that I know uh be good. You.
For you.
I would think, you know, I think mostly for scholarships and Cody's families, I would for the best.
Awesome, to use the font, so. Like saying anything, or?
Thank you, Senator.
Both shoes move that the select board accept current and future donations in memory of Cody Sullivan for the purpose of funding scholarships, programming, and needed materials for the Recreation Department.
I'm also a MSK field. Almost in favor with gratitude? All right, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk about favorite subject, using up that full brother of mine.
So, um we are gonna be asking for the approval of a two thousand, nine hundred dollars of the full brother's recreational funds uh to support the entire pickleball slash tennis court project uh at the Recreation Department. Uh it, this amount includes all repairs, you know, crop repairs, relining, repainting, and then the installation of uh four new standalone pickleball courts. And the repairing, painting, and relining of the three back tennis courts closest to the Little Red Schoolhouse. I guess it's still cool. Uh but uh the tennis courts will be standalone as well. Uh the pickle, the sport of pickleball is here to stay. Our rec department has over a hundred twenty participants in our program during the fall, and another hundred twenty in the winter. Uh we offer it four days a week indoors, uh which is capped at forty people per day. The COA also has a great following with their three day a week program, uh which we have over at Veterans Memorial Church. I do know they do a day over at Jenkins School as well. Uh these courts will allow both the Recreation Department and COA to not only expand upon our program, but also offer more to our community. Uh with these standalone courts, during the nice weather, they're already completely packed. I mean, springtime, fall time, summertime, uh early morning through the evening, always packed. So we believe there will be even more demand uh for the usage. And so um you know, with this project as well, there will still be tennis courts that even the high school can use for practicing uh if need be, so. Just wanted to make you guys aware of that, obviously, you know, there will be pickleball courts there, but we're still keeping some things.
So pickleball, we're going from twelve, it is what, four, six?
Eleven.
How many twelve?
Twelve pickleball courts.
Yeah, four.
Four.
So four, so.
We have one right now.
Yeah, right.
One right now, and then, but they, now you still have the three.
Three tennis courts in the back, but the back, you're essentially doubling the amount of folks that could get ready to use it, you're getting four. Oh, five, forty percent, I guess. Uh fabulous. That's.
Well, you can get more people on a pickle, on a tennis court, pickleball court.
Yes.
That's the, I think that's the key.
Right, we're moving it, you have four, it's more people, small space, using money, use for recreation. Let's, no questions, comments, thoughts, concerns?
I'm thrilled, thank you for finding the solution to be intense, it's cost effective and gets done in now and not in four years, thank you. I can't believe the room's not over.
It is more of the, I feel like a temporary solution, I just want you guys to know that as well, like it's like maybe hopefully we we can look at a more permanent solution down the road, but it's more of just like a.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one question, and there was one in two, about nets or anything, it was just for that.
No, so they will be installing sleeves for the poles to be uh you know, included in there for the football, as well as nets. Yep, yep.
On the mark.
So yeah, permanent, permanent nets, which they take out during the winter seasons as well, just like they do with the tennis nets.
Yeah.
Uh that even helps us out with that, so.
We have a budget for that? Is that a money budget?
It should be, uh budget for new nets. Um. Well, it's in, it's included in this.
They're included in that.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But down the road, if we need the nets, maybe you can certainly include it, I feel like include it into ours, yeah, I think it'll be a start.
Well, I'd like to say that here, here, what Karen just said, um whether it's a solution, um temporary or not.
Right.
We do not have a lot of property, as you know, and I don't want to give people, give them false hope. Also, until they come up with a, 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 a solution to the sound problem that other communities are experiencing, I would be loathe to put any pickleball courts anywhere near a neighborhood. So I think it's a great solution, I'm really happy we're doing it, and the fact is, they also have opportunities to play pickleball in other cities, towns. They also have indoor pickleball, so I appreciate that, that it's here. Who knows if it's here to stay or not, but I think it's a great solution for now, and I really appreciate it, and I think it's great use of the Toll Brothers. So, thank you.
I agree with all the compromises exactly, it was like, I will select for members. Final, it was great.
What is the timing on this again?
Uh, timing would be, we're hoping sometime, well, the dates of the contracts date sometime between April 3rd, 1/25, and June 12th, I believe. Uh, this type of project, it only takes, I mean, a week to.
So by June 12th, this would be, okay.
Yep, shouldn't take long. We had it done five, six years ago, just for the house sports, obviously, but, you know.
Okay, yeah, it's on April in the contract. Okay, so.
I mean, it's fifty-seven now.
Yeah, no, that's what I wanted to know, so people are on hold, and then it's, it'll be ready, right?
Right, by the Fourth of July.
By, by the Fourth of July, you will be playing pickleball.
Play pickleball, Fourth of July tournament.
Yes.
Let's do it.
Susan Erickson, you know, your old pickleball tournament.
You will win.
But also, like, the, we're filming some of the cracks that are over there, this is good for the tennis, this is good for the pickleball.
When we went out there, we got over, it's over a thousand feet of cracks that were buried, that need to be done.
I mean, when Nick and I thought, so we can't just do the pickleball.
Yeah, yeah.
It makes sense.
All right, man. Love the budget number, let's get it done. Do we have a motion?
Move to utilize eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars of the Toll Brothers funds for recreation purposes to award a contract for three twenty-seven First Parish Road tennis court and pickleball court re-lining and repairs.
Want to do a further motion? I mean, unless we have a question about the contracts. Sports tech.
For sports tech, yeah. So they came, obviously, they were the lowest bid. There were four bids that came in. Which, we checked with all references, nothing but great things to say about them. They haven't really done much around the subshore area, but Westford, Boxborough, Walbeam, South Hamilton, Belmont, Newburyport, Westernburyport, nothing but great things to say about them.
Do you have a better motion?
Nope, now there's another one on page sixty-four, do you do?
Further move? Oh, oh, further move to sixty-four.
Move to award a contract to Sports Tech Inc. of Beverly, Massachusetts, in the amount of eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars for the three twenty-seven First Parish Old Gates tennis courts and pickleball courts, each serving repair.
What's your, what's that, by? By this, can't feel, all those in favor, aye, aye, unanimous. So there, it'll be, it'll be essentially finished at the end of the month, beginning in December, except for the paint application. The contract will mark to that, when the courts will be done, there'll be temporary lines on them, they'll be ready to play on spring without the paint. So that's why we can do that, because that'll be playable for the high schools.
Good timing, at all.
Yeah, signing work, so great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have pickleball, we have.
Yeah.
We have, William team, you have? Select words, uniform. Are you going next?
No, so we actually, we're not going to do that next amendment item.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
The twenty B's were done, I gotta wait until next meeting, I'm just not completely.
Do you believe there's still? All right, so now we've got. Jim drove the, uh, winter vine, the fourth voluntary extension. I'll preface this before we go, this potentially, we have, I don't know if we can rip line. We're, this is the exact same thing that we've been doing, just extending it, I mean, this every year, for folks at home for the, for Cal maintenance. We're, if we approve it, the status quo.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add, we'll have a later discussion about how our purchase agreement, like, this is just that, the board wishes to continue shutting their window down at night. This is the mechanism, the cost goes up about six thousand dollars from twenty zero to twenty five. Set that, set to the check. It would run through May of twenty seven, and that's when our power purchase may expire. So that's what we'll be discussing, that probably after the meeting. Yeah, please tell.
And the power purchase agreement is with, is it with the electric company?
Central wind LLC.
Okay, so that's when the actual, the big contract is for.
We buy their power, and we have the pressure their power expires, we have the option to either renew it, or tell them that we're not going to do it. In which case, they go to the market, self-help.
Sell what to sweep the dollar? The power, power, winter vine that exists down there? So in other words, the lease, the land lease is.
Does not expire.
It does not, does it ever expire?
Go back and look, it has at least another seven years?
I thought it was twenty. I might have got it as twenty, though.
I, I have to go back and look, Karen, I can, I can find it.
Sorry, that's seven years, twenty years.
Well, you're getting twenty totals, so.
I thought it was twenty-five, so.
Twelve. Correct, we're well under it. It's seven years still on plan.
I'll kind of comment next to that.
If we decided not to extend or to re-sign the contract in seven years, does that mean they have to pay down term by end?
That really didn't catch that, Karen, the problem.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, I answered that question, that question. Nikki, what's the balance? I don't know, sure. All my questions checked.
Right about a tenth, I knew that account was there. And the balance is seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and five cents. Thank you very much, you know what? All that.
So you have a question?
Of course, please.
By not redoing this specific agreement, are we then opening up the classic situation where we're going to be messing with the neighbors and all of that?
And the window will operate totally bronze again.
And we would have all kinds of.
You'll be back dealing with the issues we dealt with three years ago.
I recall that when I was, I was in favor of this, please. Piece of blood.
Now, can I just clarify the rates are not updated yet? It says not updated in our backup.
They're updated on the handout. And they, the, um. The PPA rate not increased, it said, um, one oh nine, and REC rate went up to point three.
Okay, all right, all right.
One oh three.
So in the back, it goes twenty-five, twenty-six, and I can't see that.
And they're actually stable, only three years, or they're more stable in the third, um, on the third, here, I'm bringing.
Gotcha, okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
No, it's a bit of a fable, no. It's a little easier. All right, seeing. I have a little bit of motion.
I would have any questions?
Sixty-seven.
Move to, move to approve the extension of the fourth voluntary agreement agreement as drafted in the fourth.
Who's like, can't feel, say about this comment.
With Central Wind LLC.
Thank you. As a benefit.
And second about this comment, all those in favor, aye, aye, it's unanimous. All right. Now, we get time on for our water treatment plant updates. Yeah, Laura and Karen, I'm sorry, I'm just reading. There, Laura and Karen, no, Steve Rafferty's going to lead the whole, thanks. How are you? Good.
All right, go. Introduction, yes, Laura, Laura and Steve. Yeah. I'll take the microphone. Thank you for the opportunity to come back before the board, I appreciate the opportunity, and it's exciting time for us to be moving from sort of one of the initial phases of construction into the next, so you'll hear about that from my colleague Lauren Hurdle. I'd like to introduce her tonight, as she'll be the PM on the project moving forward, there was a different Lauren, so that makes sounds familiar. We have switched up, Lauren's got eighteen years of experience in some of our most managing, some of our most complex projects, so you're in safe hands with her, and I trust you see the board back at here, so, turn over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and thanks for pulling this up.
Thanks.
Yeah, so, thank you again, really do appreciate the opportunity to meet everyone, very excited to be a part of this project. Tonight, but, you know, I'll take the next few moments here just to go through the agendas, we have a project overview. Looking at construction progress to date, so we'll talk about what's been happening since mobilization in mid-September. Upcoming construction activities, we're really focused on over the next six or so months, like the big phase of construction that's taking place. Ongoing project coordination, we built in some nice routines to make sure that everyone's feeling comfortable and understands what's going on with this project, so we'll review that and then open up for any comments and questions. Hi, so the, the data focus over the last couple of months here has been projects and metals. We have reviewed about fifty percent of the projects and metals we anticipate for this project, so just about a hundred and seventy, and actually, based on my project manager, she said a hundred and seventy-one today, she got another one out the door. So we're staying on top of that, there's a lot of coordination with our subs. We have architect, structural, process, electrical, so we're really focusing on coordinating with that team for this metal overview. I do want to make note that, you know, saying that we turn around within a two-week time period, what it really allows us, we have online construction program, Brokport, that allows us to maintain, like, timely sharing of the metals that are coming in, so the contractors will submit those, we get them in right away, so there's no concern with things getting lost in email. The town, OPM, engineer, contractor, everyone has access to that site. So it's a great platform to just keep everyone informed of these project metals that's are coming in. Another, you know, use of that program is contractor request for information. So as those come in, again, we're alerted right away, we're able to provide like a timely response, so we can just keep the project moving and answer any questions that they may have. So right now, we are on schedule, we do not see any, you know, slippage happening, so with the issued date of August eighth pronounced to proceed, we're still on track with substantial completion shown there, December twenty-four, twenty twenty-six. And same with final completion of June eighth, twenty twenty-seven. And we also recognize, you know, project budget being such important here, staying very close contact with the contractor as things arise to maintain, you know, you know, reducing any cost changes, so right now, there are no cost changes to be issued. Thank you. Yeah, still perfect. So here's some photos of construction products, so as I mentioned, they started mobilization in the middle of September, so just about a month and a half of construction out there. Some notable items to the, the right here, we have our de-watering basin, so those have been installed. Planning board expect the basins on the twenty-fourth of October, and we have a final plan that's being reviewed as well for that, so that piece is moving right up, you know, moving right along there. Also, removal of large rocks, it's been a, a big piece, you know, boulders that the contractor's been dealing with out there. Not pictured here, we have installation of a construction perimeter fencing, so that's for safety requirements, I can, I can note that that's about forty-five hundred linear feet of construction fencing that we have around the site. And then we also have, you know, construction trailers that are shown in the picture up there, so that has, you know, where internet heating, you know, whatever's needed for people that are onsite to be able to get some, I'm saying, onsite as well. So the main construction activities coming up will be the foundation and processing excavation. So they're starting with the recycle pump station, that's the deepest excavation on the site of approximately seventeen feet below ground surface. Then they'll move in phases, the water treatment plant that averages around fourteen feet below grade. Couple notes on concrete that we're expecting out there, talking with the contractor, we're looking at seventy-two concrete pours, six thousand cubic yards of concrete, so there's going to be a lot of concrete work, so that six-month period will be pretty active, a lot of people on site. So that's going to be the, the bulk of the work over the next six months here. And, yeah, I wanted to highlight the project coordination that we have, we have some nice daily, weekly, and monthly routines for this project. Just looking at the heart of it being communication, making sure people feel it, you know, understanding what's going on. So daily, we have a, an individual that's on site, they're performing daily onsite observation. That way, if something's happening in the field, we hear from them right away, we can have a quick turnaround on, you know, addressing any issues that might arise in the field. We also have erosion control measures that need to be checked daily, so that individual is taking care of those daily inspections. And then weekly, we have, the town has, yeah, set up a, a nice meeting weekly where we have the town, OPM, the design engineer, as well as contractors, meeting onsite, quick ten-minute meeting, but really what it allows is that, just understanding, like, any items happen this week, like, it keeps everyone, again, just talking to each other, which is really impactful. Also, weekly, the contractor provides the construction general permit, site inspection reports, and we also have a weekly construction update that is prepared and that gets posted to the town website. Oh, sorry, and also to note, three-week look-ahead schedules, so we do have an overall schedule that we review, but just getting in the granular, every, every week we get a three-week look-ahead update. And then monthly, we have construction progress meetings, and I do want to correct, we moved our meeting, it's going to be on Friday, but that typically, that meeting is held on the first Thursday of every month. And at those meetings, it's the same individuals that are on the weekly site meeting, but we also have SRF funding, so our DDP representative is also on those calls. As well as our architect sub, and are also involved in, you know, our monthly meetings. And we also perceive an updated project schedule monthly, so again, just keeping, keeping us all up to date of where we stand on project schedule.
Love that slide.
Yeah, it's my favorite slide, because I like that around talking. So I, yeah, did place comments and questions, I also, yeah, made sure it included an overall schedule view, so you'll have that, that was from October, so if there are any questions, happy to answer them.
So I'll start broadly. Doesn't matter what project it is, if, like. My fifth grader will have the science fair project, and I actually worry about something, what do you worry about? What, like, what sort of things do you worry about, we should be looking for, is it slippage, is it coastal runs, what is it? To get a, none of us here built a water treatment plant. What is the, like, oh, it's the electrician, if it's that concrete, if it's going to snow, what you, what you would be thinking, what keeps you occupied?
Yeah.
On us.
Yes. So going into the concrete work, I mean, that is front of mind right now, because there is so much concrete work. I've even heard the figure of, we're going to have like sixty individuals on site, like, just being able to coordinate with the concrete work. So getting that team coordinated is really important to me, we also have concrete testing, material testing is part of this project. So, again, I worry about it, but to get ahead of it, looking at coordinating a meeting with all of the, you know, concrete subs, contractor, our materials testing, our structural engineer, our onsite representative. contractor, our materials testing, our structural engineer, our onsite representative, so that we can understand like, okay, what could be things that go wrong? Um, so that is front of mind, but I know once we get past the concrete, yes, there's a whole building that will be, uh, erected and processed tankage. Uh, what is also excellent with this project theme is we have, you know, she's not here, but I know we've met Steve Robbins before, just the wealth of knowledge. So I have a lot of confidence when we get to that point. And, and they are already coordinating with process vendors, even though some metals have not come in yet, they're talking with them. So they're trying to get ahead of any concerns there, but there's a
There's a good idea, you're about, oh, there's a shortage of X, Y, Z.
No, but right, right now, I, I'll say like, you know, dirt and concrete, everything, that's, that's pretty well controlled. We've yet to get our way through the shop cementals, some of the process equipment, there's not a lot of vendors to make this. So it's not keeping me awake and I'd be nice to see some of the shops come through, purchase agreement from the blue and for that. And a state delivery date that fits into the schedule, you know, no surprises. Somebody says, oh, we've got twenty orders, you know, it's gonna take two months longer than we thought. Six months ago we gave, but they're, they're talking with the vendors, it seems like all of that's good. That's where I sit back a little bit, I'm like, where are we at with some of these metals? Where are we at with some of the metals?
Perfect, yeah, both are perfect. So when, if we have the same conversation in what, February, and you still look, is that what's called now we're trouble?
Will be passed out, we'll be worried about the colors on the paper.
Yeah, okay, wanna make sure, just for time, if you know, trying to go through.
Yeah, right, I would say between now and the first of the year, we'll know about all of it.
All right, I'm sorry.
Would you be more?
Mouthwash.
Okay, but yeah, I know we're in conversations, so we'll have a good sense about the person.
Well, while we're in concrete, um, one of the concerns everyone always has when you've got a massive construction project and lots of concrete trucks, um, have we worked out, you know, the staging of that process? Um, and are they all coming on the same road? Um, is there a way to have some of them come down on twenty-three and others come down three-eight? I'm only wondering, and maybe it's nothing, I mean, maybe it's three trucks a day, I have no idea. So I know when we did the, this, the beach at North Situation, there's a lot of concern about how many trucks were coming down Gannon Road? Where we're gonna stage them, you know, what kind of disruption was it gonna be? Uh, the good news is this is on three-A, so we have a way around it. But, um, you know, the, the way to get in here is, could, could cause some issues, especially behind one twenty-three, so.
Now that there's quite a bit of space on the site, so queuing up in the street, we don't anticipate to be a, a major issue that may have been on the other project. I'm familiar with that one, but we got a lot of space cleared on that site for the rest of the state offering.
A, a month ago, we had a lengthy Zoom sort of conversation with concrete supplier, all the people wanted to that specific issue about how's it gonna get in, coming in on three-A and the path is gonna do so it's not impacting any secondary or tertiary roads came up. Uh, off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact route, but from the plant to the, the site, it's pretty straightforward.
It's, I, I, since I live over in that area, it's a much longer route, considerably longer to come off, get onto one thirty-nine and then onto three-eight. But they're fairly substantial roads versus one twenty-three, which was pretty volatile and gets close to houses as you get near Situens. So, um, so that, that would might be turned. And one of the concerns, speaking of, that you've cleared so much space, questions have already started coming up. I thought they were gonna not, they weren't gonna clear cut. Um, and I'm explaining to people as best I can, you have, when you're building something this significant, you have to clear enough rooms so that everything can get around and stuff can get in and out. But I sort of recall there being a substantial discussion with the planning board about when the project is through, the types of screening materials, the trees, the, the, all the bushes, whatever it is that will, you know, appear at the end versus the beginning. So I just want to be sure I'm not telling people the wrong thing.
You're telling people the correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes, that's accurate, we just find.
I mean, construction sites always look a thousand times worse than they do when they're done. But in the meantime, you know, there's already a little bit of, of the, you know.
There's a landscape plan and there is some flexibility with the plantings on where they're gonna go.
Right.
Because some areas look like it's screened, but there just weren't as many trees in that particular area, so it looks, it looks different.
Right, and different types of materials. So nobody needs to worry that about it at all. Thank you.
There's no question.
You're good.
I did not, thank you, I appreciate the presentation. Just a couple of quick ones, thank you very much for this update, appreciate it. Uh, Kevin, are you attending the weekly meetings?
I'm the one about the weekly meetings to have.
There you go.
Yes, and they usually are also too.
And usually they're also.
So we've been doing bi-weekly meetings and I want a weekly.
Um, and then we're gonna be talking about the easement for the transformer next. So you're the right people to ask this, is the transformer noisy? Is where it placed is near on the backside?
Tran- transformer or generator?
Right word?
Generator or transformer?
Transformers.
It's the
Probably the electric company that we have to have easement to bring in.
Yes, yeah.
Know you know.
Yeah, okay. I just saw, we're, we're gonna be talking about that easement next for them to bring power. And, uh, when you look at the map, it would be, you know, I have one of those buzzing things that goes. Okay. That was my non-construction question. And this is really a procedural question for all of us. The last public building commission meeting, they were unable to get a form, so they have not been participating in this process. Um, are we, have you thought about doing another push for recruiting or?
We, we got a couple, I think, haven't we, Sharon?
Hmm.
Got a couple.
All right, so that's
Pushed all the information out to that construction schedule, all that stuff, told them what the meetings were. Kevin and I are at their disposal, they want any meeting, let us know.
I know, I tried, I got, I logged on and it was like, why does it just happen to you? But I just want the board to be aware that despite best intentions, the public building commission is not right now engaged.
How many people are looking for?
One or two.
I don't know, I have to look at, I have to look, I don't know.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, this, this is great. I gotta ask about the, yeah, what you're worried about, we're concerned, just so as we can start thinking and seeing, uh, things as we talk to folks who are there concerned about as well. Uh, nine hundred and forty-five, that's the number, it's how many days.
Nine hundred and forty-five.
Not sure, June eighth, twenty-twenty-seven, so we'll have a countdown.
Yeah.
Nine forty-five.
So it's a day of expansion completion, it's my seventieth birthday.
Oh.
That, that, that would be a great birthday present.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, anyway. She has my blood, double game.
Really, yeah. But the goal is to have substantial completion before
I was gonna say do before to get balloons.
Yeah.
Yeah, do before, yeah, maybe even, maybe even, it's very nuts.
So in the, in the short term, our, our biggest concern is probably the weather, what the winter looks like. If we have a bad winter, that could postpone some of the concrete. If we have a very good winter, um, concrete schedule, schedule could be ahead, because we're moving ahead and get that forward. So they're gonna go after it aggressively, um, I'm talking to the contractor and, um, you know, weather dependent, we get another winter like we've been getting?
Great.
It could be a great change. The full winter, because remember the contractor has to keep all as cool as the, um, re-buy has to be a certain temperature. They tend it, build it and keep, keep going on it for at least seven days till it sets up. So that can get expensive and at some point the contractor might say, we're, we're gonna shut down the concrete on the pitch. So we'll just say every day, we'll let the, right in the weather gods all.
Today was nice.
We'll, we'll do a continuous offering to the weather gods, absolutely.
The, the heaters and things are, a reasonable heating program is in the budget now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's in the, it's in their schedule, but you know, as a contractor, they're gonna, if it gets down to zero, they're gonna say, we're, we're done for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a two-deep freeze though.
Right.
They're not gonna fight.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You are, thank you, appreciate that.
I appreciate the nice schedule.
When I do for back here, so.
Okay.
See you, see you.
You're good.
Right.
Right.
Thank you. Talking about easements.
Pretty straightforward, in order to bring the power, transform our plant, the electric company needs permission to do it, need an easement place to wire this transformer. That's really on the associate, they can do that, which is why the wires.
So that's good.
Yeah, I know. It's very straightforward.
We all put my first city to the new water agreement plan.
Well, we're, well, we're, if we don't.
All right. And keep a lot of answers.
We'll put grant easement to the Massachusetts Electric County National Grid for the installation of electrical lines and a transformer at the site of the new water feeding plant at four fifty-three. She put up this machine, I want it.
Unless I have a, I just can't feel all those in favor. Hi, uh, unanimous.
The whole point is gonna be underground or they're gonna be above ground?
He doesn't have. Top my head on that door, I'd have to confirm it, I I believe in pub roger.
It looks like
Says on our, I'm suggesting on the
Yeah, they're coming in from above ground.
It goes, it goes over the road.
Oh, wait, look
Definitely above ground.
It would wander over.
Yeah, ground side of the type, it's definitely above ground. And it comes into a telephone pole.
Oh, yeah, cool, cool, cool. Just, just one question about, um, Jim and Nancy, are there any financial milestones you need to be looking at in terms of the project? Um, is it all just? It took a lot of parts, uh, parts paid out, so I'm trying to pay down the arco funds so that we don't have any issues with those. But we have no, you know, we're, we're totally funded for this thing, yes. So we don't have to worry about anything that is leading, whatever the deadlines that you might have to
Yes, I have funds, yeah, nothing for you guys to do, but a lot of work for Nancy. The thing that we have to do in terms of payroll and all that stuff, yes, all of that.
Thank you.
Express, you can go, Ms. Harrison's in the room.
Two minutes.
You can go. You can go, maybe you can start.
No, the next agenda. Next agenda.
Bye.
Thank you very much, I'll go.
We're just staying back there. Yeah, we don't want to talk about that.
Twenty-twenty-six budget update, M and A. And we're like, I don't
I'll be very quick, I give you the, the highlights of fifty thousand what you two weeks ago when we went into that. Uh, just some more details, we've already, we watched free cash coming out of the last budget, a lot of that was given our turn backs. It's good, we use that for our capital, we fund those stabilization funds we use, so we fund this time we, that we used for the water treatment plant. The big thing is I think we maintain our triple A bond rating, which is good.
Double A.
Double A, sorry, double A.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Special thinking.
It's not interesting what happens with some of the triple A's, like they're hitting us, I'm not sure someone's up, they should, should stay triple A, but that's, uh, it's just me. We continue to deal with all the FEMA, we do have a, a meeting with supposedly everybody coming up, come on twelve-two, with D P, with C Z M, FEMA, with MEMA, with everybody in the same room. We get an idea of where we are on all our projects, what we think the stumbling blocks are, trying to clear path forward. So I want to thank Stephanie Cooper, the undersecretary, the O E A, for that. Yeah, hopefully that'll be
Is she new?
She's new, yes, so hopefully that'll at least give us a path forward on some of those projects. So for twenty-twenty-six, fiscal twenty-twenty-six, it's not just for our first, we are anticipating two and a half percent increase in taxes. New growth at seven hundred thousand, last year was one point nine. So you can see with that, it's taken a huge nose dive. Uh, right now our state A is level funded. In December, the consensus revenue committee meets, that's the House, the Senate, A and F. Private-backed people they meet and come up with a consensus revenue figure for the state for the year coming up. Under the banking administration, whenever the state revenue went up, that's a little bit late went up. Uh, Governor Haley has not made that proclamation, but last year she didn't keep it. So we'll get an idea of what local label looked like, uh, in December, good, bad, a little different. Uh, locally seats now are level funded, some are up, some are down with the reduction in the interest rates. We do expect that we're getting a big drop early investment income, so that'll make our first financial forecast estimate twice. Again, we have the census revenue in December and then health insurance, they have shared in health insurance. This is just a nice pie chart that Nancy likes showing where the revenue comes from. There's, you can see eight percent of available revenue for the town Situens budget comes from property taxes. Just, uh, new growth figures, jump to the next one, Nancy, see the new growth figures where they've gone. Size two point four, one point nine, and this year, actually it's gonna be seven hundred thousand. Again, uh, a lot of our projects starting to work, also the state has changed how we calculate new growth. So things that we calculated as new growth before the state, no one allows us to calculate those. Uh, Joe DiVito estimates that cost is probably a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars growth that we can count on. Is your average tax bills, twenty-twenty-five estimate? Local states, again, those are very conservative, uh, for several reasons, so they're very volatile. And the state does have mid-year cuts that you have, so. So run the local seats and make up on that what I have to go reduce the budget. Investment income is coming down, building wiring is coming down, apparently distance of the climbing, those are all going down. See yourself around all the large projects, Sunset Situens done. The, one of the big bushes done, one down three-A is done. We do have several large projects that are
Permanent?
Uh, including the forty-B on all local bucket. The seven new driftway, which is a medical building that is permitted. Uh, John Sullivan's project, which is between where Riverside is, the train station is permitted. Uh, the Teske project where health processes, that is permanent. Uh, none of those are moving right now. Plating Ward did, I believe last week, grant a change on the medical building one from the developer back to the owner, who supposedly has the ability to afford with that project. The Teske project, unfortunately Mr. Teske passed away, so it's my understanding his wife is like, sell that project. We do have several large projects, permanent, ready to go. They're not gonna help us for twenty-twenty-six, but hopefully for twenty-twenty-seven, uh, we'll see what we got. Both the points. The budget is balanced, we do not rely on any one-time revenue to balance it. New growth is done, we do expect some of the state A numbers to commit better. Uh, no new positions that were requested have been funded. There are no layoffs, but we have a new banking positions that have not been filled for this year or a certain time. Uh, some seasonal positions have been reduced hours. Uh, we did eliminate the road and for sure in the, last year, we bought and supplemented those with money from the wind and the solar. We still have that option next year, but right now does not show up in the budget. Property taxes plus new growth, two point six million fixed costs, one point six. We do have some increases in other items like paybacks from the enterprise accounts, you hope to see things like that. But in the end, we had one point three million dollars, excuse, sorry, uh, for all the, all the operating budgets left over. When we do the we do the split into schools, that lot in town, three hundred eighty thousand dollars to fund everything that now leads to fund fiscal year twenty-six. So for people at home don't know how we do it, first thing we do is we look at what our fixed costs are, health insurance, building insurance, unemployment, all those things. We estimate those, those are subtracted from our variable revenue. And then what's left over is split even, it's a school sixty-six, thirty-four for the schools, thirty-three, sixty-six for town. We did make a one-time adjustment this year to give the town a little more money. So, uh, normally it's sixty-six, thirty-four, thirty-one, sixty-six. So that's what leaves us with the three hundred eighty-two thousand to go forward. Here's how many big drivers employee patching up, six hundred eighteen thousand. That was originally scheduled to be fully funded in twenty-twenty-eight.
Okay, next.
But then both counties now kicked out to twenty-thirty-one. Health insurance, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, that's eighteen percent increase regarding the, the not medics, which is fifty-three percent of our population. And we are projecting a nine percent increase in the general. Yeah, we'll get that in January. I do think it'll be lower than that, whether it's substantially lower, I can't tell you. Uh, we are looking at some other options on health insurance. It will not be less, it may be less of an increase, but it will not be less than we're paying this year. So there is no magic bullet on that. Debt services up and they go tech, we have five additional schools that go tech this year. So there's the stake stock numbers, we have twenty-four million, four hundred eighteen thousand dollars, common request, twenty-six million, seven, seventy, two point three million dollars, what we actually have. Uh, right away, all requests, a new staff was gone. So there's the stake stock numbers, we have twenty four million, four hundred eighteen thousand dollars, common request, twenty six million, seven seventy, two point three million dollars, well, we actually have, uh, right away, all requests, a new staff was gone, that was easy. Uh, we reduced the road to seawalls, we reduced police cruises, we reduced two full-time and two part-time vacancies, traction body line, which we usually have a lot of money in, I reduced that significantly because we have no contracts up next year. We will be starting the police contracts up next year, but, uh, there's no interest money in there right now, if we have, um, labor issues and council leases to handle, gets paid out of that line, we'll reduce that significantly. And then we went through all the expense lines, one by one, by one, by one, we made those all reductions. So these issues that have existed for a couple of years, we've talked about them, it's just really the new growth that has been able to keep going, make these changes without having to go, uh, we tried to haul it away as honest as we could, again, the budget is balanced. Frozen, frozen. So the.
Here we go.
Okay.
So the police department is still looking to get some new officers, that's based on the police reform, but we no longer have this, the hot time permanent admitting officers, one full-time assistant library, a new I T position, engineering, and fax, also great change in the collectives office, those were all denied. Still continue to spend a lot of time, our engineering staff is gonna be tied up, doing water treatment plant, and seawall projects, our regular work road water, sew project, our, 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 to be stretched out of the shit, but we'll get through it. Uh, we are still competing very well for grants, but those are getting hotter and hotter, uh, Quincy and Boston have now realized, hey, we fled too, uh, so a lot of those Dan Seawall grants that we were doing very well on are getting even more invented. So those will be a challenge going forward. The budget's balanced, we gave you a list of where the cuts are, it's the first thing in your book, you can go through it, remember the department heads, obviously the department heads, uh, are not happy, no one is, um, I know some of them will come in and probably make the case to have their funding restored. I've told them if they do that, that I will ask them where they're gonna get the corresponding revenue from, it's not fair to you, it's not fair to me, so they'll convince, say, give me my money and then you go find where it comes from, uh, they all make good cases, but it's just really not there. There is some good news, if you'd like to get to that, and that's in your enterprise accounts, uh, Widdow's Walk is doing fantastic, we actually expect probably gonna have a good year this year, I think he said.
It's gonna get to me.
He's way over where he was this time last year, uh, the course was packed today, it's probably gonna be packed again tomorrow, so he is killing it, they're doing a great job, uh, so Widdow's Walk will have a strong balance again next year, it does not require a big rate increase. I think he's gonna try and talk to you about one, because it does have some capital projects, uh, one aside, uh, he was late filing his capital, he put up a late capital request, that'll be considered, but that's an enterprise account, worry about that point. Um, Widdow's Walk enterprise does not require a rate increase to fund the budget for next year. Waterways Enterprise, same thing, they finished strong, they had a good year, uh, they will not need a rate increase for their budget, we won't need to talk about rate increases with them because they have significant costs coming up. We can judge it in the harbor or the new building they wanna build, so we will have those conversations, but for your fiscal twenty six operating budget, the Waterways Enterprise does not acquire, uh, an increase. Water Enterprise had a really good year, that turn back was mostly due to debt service that we didn't have to pay, because Nancy worked her magic, but Waterway, Water Enterprise again ended in the green, was in good shape. Next year, Waterways Enterprises will not require a rate increase, but Waterways, we did eliminate a plant operator position that was in the budget, if you recall, uh, we broke off the plant operator and a systems operator, two years ago, I believe. And so we eliminated the plant operators, so one person wants the plant, the other person wants distribution, so at this point, we don't need that position, we may look to fill that again as we get into the new water treatment plant, but right now, that position is not needed, eliminating that position eliminates any need for an increase for next year for the Water Enterprise. We did wanna fill that, it's probably three, uh, a budget, we should plug a two percent increase in rates to fill that, but right now, it's not necessary, but I thought Eric was doing it. Transfer station, uh, you just raise the rates, if those hold, then transfer station will not need a rate increase for the fiscal twenty six budget, uh, that'll be the news. Sewer Enterprise, uh, the Sewer Enterprise, just their entry costs are through the move, their chemical costs are through the move, uh, you'll see in the capital, we did not fund some of the big capital items that they need to finish, will be finishing there. Facility study, uh, we did the best we could, sew will require a three to four percent increase to maintain the budget that I've, before you, just at this point, I can't see cutting anymore without not being able to meet our requirements for this one. That's the good news, everything's in your book, everything's there, uh, we have a long way to slog through this, we go through all the departments, but that is the F Y twenty six budget as of right now, in a nutshell.
There is a line by line deduction, and you said, is it what?
It's in the five-year, uh.
Okay, it's enough, yeah.
It's, uh.
It looks like, okay.
It's, it's probably written in the, um.
Probably in the pocket.
In my book, so there's extra stuff in there.
Oh, it's right there, okay.
So that shows the world of the.
Okay, thank you. No paper clips.
The what?
No paper clips.
I, uh, so number one, thank you again for, you know, for this, um, it is difficult, it would be nice, I would hope that the state would, uh, when we talk about locally, at least, with the rate inflation, that would be lovely. I'd like to see some of the million S tax, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that, it is, it would be fabulous, um. And let's go back, more than one administration, so we're not, uh, we've got anyone, we just wanna make sure our town is funded, um. I will, don't shoot the messenger on this, but here's the question, what happened, how would you, uh, best describe, so Widdow's Walk, which is doing so well, the promise was that revenue, Widdow's Walk will benefit, it's not growing. Um, that's, that's. So the question that I, that I've received a few times, what is the benefit of Widdow's Walk versus the costs of owning it, since it's very valuable property? Well, I mean, I first said it, there's no cost, doesn't cost taxpayer any money to run Widdow's Walk, it's totally self-sufficient as an enterprise account, I wasn't here when they built it, uh, I think, yes, it was here when they built it, um, but as an enterprise account. It runs its own budget, it keeps its own money, it does not kick money back, it's not accepted cover, the cost incurred by the town for the operation, so health insurance pensions, those things like that, we, we take and pay it back to offset those costs. And we get, and the revenue from, yeah, this is what we're gonna talk about, and in the restaurant, we get three percent from the, at the restaurant, you're bringing hundreds of people to town on a daily basis that are shopping, using restaurants, uh, you are protecting the open space, it is a beautiful open space, it's available all winter for the town to recreate there, uh, once you're not playing golf. So it, it really is environmental benefit, it's an open space benefit, it does provide us some money, the ancillary benefits that golf course kicks off, uh, and what's the alternative if you don't have Widdow's Walk, we're housing group or someone else, probably. Yeah, don't shoot the messenger, no.
Another question.
Um, over it up.
I'll ask you one.
This yes.
Um, so we, let's leave the seawalls aside. The four hundred thousand roads and seawalls are booked, does this mean we're getting no road work done, or is that covered under what chapter?
There's still money in the capital of road ways, in chapter ninety money, about half a million dollars, different state, uh, and then we do use some of our water, still money, we use those projects sometimes, okay, for paying the price.
Why, but it's not usually when you dug them up and have to fix them?
Yep, we dug up a lot of them, so a lot of those will be getting fixed.
But if you're not in the, in the area of, um, the category where, uh, your growth things dug up because you're getting into water main, or getting into the sewer line, or whatever, you're getting a gas line, um. What, what are the chances of people who have not had a work prepared in twenty twenty five years, and I am not complaining, my road has not been touched, other than to have a pothole filled in thirty years. Um, and my road is not in bad shape, so I'm not complaining, but, you know, uh, it just seems to me as though unless it's, you gotta be pretty bad out in town.
Fortunately, the way we look at it is, uh, more well-traveled, the more heavily traveled, the more people that use it, the higher the cost, uh, so if you're a four-home subdivision on a cul-de-sac, and your road's not very good shape. The return for us on that, it goes about a hundred thousand dollars to do that, opposed to do a overlay on Jericho Road, um, it's just not there, so some of those are not gonna be enacted. Uh, it sounds to be kind of intuitive, but if you do a complete road study and a road survey, they'll tell you if a road's in poor condition, don't bother fixing it, it costs too much money, concentrate on your, roads are in fair condition to bring those up, because you'd get a lot more back to your dog. So, um, you know, people who are, who are on those small cul-de-sacs, those small, fortunately.
Well, you know, I, I know that there's, there have been situations, I think, and I'll just pull this out of the pocket of my hand, utility road is in terrible shape for a long time, people complain, 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 and it's quite, so. So I, I guess I'm just asking, the four hundred thousand dollars, I'm assuming the whole issue of seawalls is being dealt with through a whole bunch of other, uh, capital items that we have, that we are working on, but the, it, it's just hard to see. What, it's just hard to see the four hundred thousand that was sort of dedicated to roads and seawalls.
The seawall portion of that money is usually, we have, you know, we had those breaks last year, of course, with seawall work, that's all my fix, so that's, it's not really to build the seawall, it's gonna be phased and stuff like that. So, yeah, I mean, chapter ninety hasn't changed in twenty years, at least, maybe a lot of your Karen, you might know what I do, what's the cost of asphalt gone up since then, um, the state hasn't stepped up, so, uh, you know, it's probably, usually about half that money goes to roads, maybe a little more, some, about two hundred thousand dollars, not a lot, but that's why last year, it was, uh, the, uh. When it's on.
In fiscal twenty four, we did get three hundred and fifty one thousand of fair share for roads, we don't know what we're gonna get held for, it's a year-to-year thing, and they could change it from a rest personally program to something else.
Yeah, I want to one record, I'm not complaining from my street, I'm just saying, in thirty years, we've had some potholes, but.
Yeah, I mean, we tried to look at the ones that have the most bad, and then some of that might.
I get that.
Pose a, I would say, as if, yeah, one road up on the west end, I don't know if you can tell you, but the road itself was in bad shape, it really wasn't something that would be on our list, uh, but the way the road was draining under the May road, caused some license problems, things like that, we had to go fix that one, let's make that one sit.
Well, we'll have to beat the dead horse, but you'll be extremely soon to be around pollution, and nothing is ever going there, we're not getting water mains there, we're not getting a sewer, we're not getting anything there, and it's.
Were they going with the gas line up there, or they, they went away?
No, but, but they wouldn't do it, they wouldn't do it. They asked.
They have gas?
No, they're not doing new gas lines, and that's when they were supposed to do the one twenty three, when we asked them, could they include the O G A, and the answer was no.
They still haven't come back to do one twenty three, and right now, they're looking to go back to Jericho.
Well, I consider them factless. They are factless, they come in, they drive us crazy, and then they just sort of disappear.
One of the obvious captains considering that did Jericho from, uh, even, uh, Hattaway, and now they wanna go from Hattaway all the way out to, uh, Cedar Point. The obvious we're actually considering is because we have to repay that, and I hit the half pay father.
Right.
So.
Anyway, I mean, like I said, they're just sort of, roads are.
Yeah, I mean, here over, probably ten years ago, did a, it was an eight million dollar override, just for roads, that was a town that was short, and it's looking at the second day to do an override, to do road bonds, they're just pushing in the bonds as they know. It's just, you know, the Chaplainate hasn't changed, the price of asphalt was, I mean, for my, I, I, I already wanted this, but we sadly don't keep up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
One question, um, so water superintendent, system town administrator, what's the third elephant?
So the water one, it's not out of the general budget, that's like by the enterprise account, uh, it was a position in Nancy's office, that hasn't been filled for quite some time.
Correct.
So we eliminated that.
Uh, that's it.
Sorry, I forgot, um, I know we moved fire out of civil service, and when? I'll just tell me to get.
I'm in it.
When would you expect it would have an impact over time, liability, actually, I, I look at that number, I was scared today, I know it's only. But we haven't seen the stats that the police had almost immediately. Really? Uh, when we took the police out of civil service, we filled three vacancies in a day, I love, uh, by transfers, so hopefully, um, the issue really is, the last two times we've done it to civil service for a list, they're having a parameter top. So, um, whether we have people waiting, I know I've talked to some of the firefighters, before it was a contract issue, we were denied a head out of town on comps, we had a new contract, we're in good shape, you know, talking it up to, probably to date on another town, so hopefully, we'll be able to pick and transfer to that out of civil service. I'm just trying to look for, I hope you know, hey, happy surprise.
Yeah.
We cut that number, it's great.
That overtime number is painful.
Scary.
Yeah.
Sorry, before I forgot.
No, I mean, that was my question, I thought we were gonna tackle that overtime number.
Can you tell me about the opioid funds, opioid fund settlement, are we actually benefiting from that?
Yes, that money is being used to fund your fax budget.
Right, so, but the two, you're just not expanding their request, their staff request, and, uh.
Yes. We're not gonna, we're not gonna have an office, one have their own media person, we were hanging that here, and just, the budget doesn't support it, the opioid settlement doesn't support it, and we also told their partner, regional system, you know. See if anybody out there is doing it, maybe you can pay them four hours a week to help with your, your media stuff, but, uh, it would have dried, it would have dried down the opioid settlement much faster than we want, jarred up.
Can you remind me what their current budget is?
Fax is around a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So it doesn't get rid of the medium person they currently have, which is, it's, it's their hours.
They don't have anything right now.
Oh, they don't?
They had a part-time person that was great, by the way.
Oh, and she was in the last.
Oh, it's nice.
They use up their federal dollars, so they had a person out with their funds, but none of the federal grants, all of them. We're getting to the first few items, any other general?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, delve into, uh, what, where do you want advisory? Uh, the only, we dash to the advisory, is their secretary of person, they have a wonderful note taker that does all their events right now, tremendous person, doesn't.
He's all that by Nancy.
Nancy does all their events, they're very happy.
Going for years.
Yeah. We do say printing because we use a lot of that a lot of printing, so.
Is that, is that printing for town meeting?
It is, this one, the one per, this company, we didn't house.
Can we do like a Q R, can I have it on, so people don't need a book?
It's in the charter that they have to supply or put with, oh, I mean, supply where people may choose not to take it, may choose not to.
Yeah, it's available online.
It is, that's why I know it like.
So maybe we could do a Q R, tell, link people to it, but all of her.
It's a handful, all that paper.
A lot of people, they go to town meetings, especially the, the long time town meeting, they like, they make.
They love paper.
And I have a cross off on the face of it. But. That's a more relative call. You know, it used to be, you're supposed to mail them out to every home, I think in Lowell, they still have to mail them out.
Yeah, they do, they ask the same ones, yeah.
You know, you can imagine.
Okay, I can be worried.
What's this?
That's, they make good business.
Oh, right.
It's, it's, so that's like, no more than four thousand homes, I think, and we get two hundred people at town meeting.
Alright.
So advisory, we're all.
I didn't know.
Yeah, reserve, reserve fund no change.
The painful, honest type of way.
Alright, reserve fund no change, there's, uh, any questions?
No. No.
This is all logical stuff.
You have some of the easiest.
Right.
It's kind of won't do a lot, yeah, make punches.
Exactly.
So I always love streetlights, but let's get to property.
So I always love streetlights, oh, let's get to property, income, real life, building insurance.
Five percent increase, that's every town building, vehicles.
When is the last time we had like a change review?
Is that?
For your job, what's that?
Yeah, we did it five years ago, so it's good to.
We moved several lines out to a different carrier.
We look at it constantly, um especially some of the stuff that's really going up, uh flood insurance, like through the roof, we can move that out. Uh my stock covering box, a couple of years ago, so we now, so continue looking at it, we always have people going, so let's look at it, at least we got. Yeah.
Do something to adjust.
Now, we, we, the hot part, they can make you sure we look at what cover the same, that guy's covered.
What you're getting, cover.
Have they had a double just a couple of months.
There's policy now, um question is on, I don't know. Streetlights. Do we still, do we need those?
Still. I think we still have some streetlights that individuals are paying for, you know, when the town shut them off and they wanted to turn back on and.
I wonder.
It wasn't.
You pay for a streetlight?
Yeah.
Well, okay, learn something every day about someone, they shut it up, they shut it up.
Um so we have to call the company or somebody useful to tell you what, and they'll try to not.
Uh that's.
Not sending.
What's the cost of one?
It's about minus one, that's what we want.
That was, how much is your electric bill?
Oh, you don't wanna know, you don't wanna know.
What's the cost of one?
Really?
I thought you know what the cost of a streetlight was.
Oh, no, it's not the streetlight, it's everything else.
Oh, the streetlight, it's about the streetlight.
Yeah, so about nine years ago, I live on the, and the street, I believe, recommend that it's a cost saving measure to turn every other light, you know.
Oh, every other light?
Every other light.
And that's the point is on our street.
You're really.
Right, every other light.
And I think it's a policy that we have a light.
Is that like every street, I'm like, sure, it's like.
No, no, when, you, you have to have streetlights at certain places.
Right.
If you set your examples, when you leave our street, you have to have streetlight.
Under section.
Intersections.
For stations, but if you're in that famous town person, where I'm so cul-de-sac. You know, you don't get your road repaired and you paid for your streetlights.
Well, I will put a request out to anyone at the Votech school or any of our high school students, if you can figure out a way, or solar, high aluminum.
Yes.
Hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in actual dollars. That could pay for some.
I have an advisor going over once, I couldn't explain them by the streetlight, Bill, what was up so much higher in December to January than it was in July and August, I'm like, it's the winter time, lights are on, there's a heck of a stuff of that, it's a very straight line.
That's it.
Lights dark.
Last day, like.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp, what did shape self funding on that, right?
Yeah.
Uh we do a lay-in trust, a little good shape on that.
That looks good.
And I play it by.
Yeah.
Did you?
I have some four percent right now, unemployment rate's in the bottom state.
Yeah.
So when you start talking about layoffs, it's a rule of thumb, when you lay someone off, you're gonna take half to two thirds of the salary and put it in the underlying line. So it would save as much as that actual fee.
That's for self-insure.
Yeah, we don't, we press on, we get brought, but we're good with that.
Uh Nancy spent a lot of time, schools woke up, actually, I go to wherever we wanted. You guys want to help?
Everyone good? Very good. Don't lose these bucks during day hall. Charlie will come and.
Um.
My good.
Nice, Charlie.
Can you do a.
It would be.
And that's, that's the thanks to you, the question, you got mine.
So Nancy, you are front and center, we're gonna do something today. It's taken us four years.
Most of those.
And we.
You're not at a step hole right now, so.
Well, good, it's about time. All right, so.
All right.
Can I keep this up a little bit, Nancy, and then you can go on, so I tried to go in earlier today. And take out, when you go in your backup, it's the green, so I, I took them. The little self spreadsheet. So one way, and apparently bearing out my personal notes on what I thought of them. Uh well, that's, well.
And you think for Jenny's.
You're enough paper?
Enough paper.
Enough paper for everybody. You want. Some of them, look, when I go back through some of these. What, what are the holes? Very, very efficient.
Pretty cool, that I am.
No, we did, these are all the ones that we said.
Let's talk about. Oh, green indicates a new policy that's special, it's not that we.
Right, I mean, that needs special, that we need to.
Well, I think it was Nancy's effort to call our attention, who it was new. And not, not to editorialize on it, but that it was new.
Right, we should be able to vote on the blue and the yellows tonight, and then let's, let's, we might run through the greens.
Right.
Well, Nancy, what would you like, before we do anything? Anything you'd like to say, or how is this?
I think, I've been talking to several of you separately, I think predominantly, we're in agreement with them. I think the one section that you may wanna cut out and deal with in a different meeting, have a reserve policies, because it was one that was a blue, meaning it's um current practice, and the rest were all green, and we don't currently have reserve policies. So you may wanna take the link of my client to shred them, or you could pick out the ones that you're like, no, I, we're fine with those, and we'll look at the others. But I think um to the chair's points, where his notes are, ninety percent of the gray, you probably come to conclusion that yet, they'll define that they're new policies, but it's something you should do, it's best practice, and then there's just a couple that are, let's talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I personally read through all of them and agree, I want, I would like us to assess the reserve policies, just so that we're not like adding additional risk and burden on future boards. But otherwise, I was okay with all the rest, but I mean, I think we could talk about it, I don't think we have to put it too in the meeting.
See, does everyone each want like a minute or two to look this over, and then we can talk.
I think we should just go, what, let's just do.
Is that, all right. First one, Harvard Master Finance Director, they talk about the rates and fees over here.
Easy.
I'd agree with that.
I agree, and I think what we have to, what we're doing there is all of the um enterprise funds may come to the board annually.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so we're just, some of them do and some of them don't, so we're just aligning that all of them do. And I'm, I'm in support, I'm in support of that, yes, the widows walk too, they all need to come.
Well, I have some the impression that every enterprise comes to us.
Okay, but they don't come annually.
No, they come as needed.
Oh, but they come for the budget, that they may not come for the rates.
The budget. Uh for the rates, so.
So the two, since we're gonna address, actually, we'll do it right now, the next one, number three, is the golf. So if we, they golf should come as well.
Yes, right. Right, it's.
Just come and talk about it.
Yeah, I think every enterprise bunch, I mean, you'd see.
So. One and three is done, all right, so now to number two, the budget will result reductions for the service, the cycle must include in its budget review, discussion on override option.
I think that you have, my comment on that is it's just a discussion, so to me, that's a good practice, because you're getting close to that edge, so it's a good practice.
Well, it's like I asked the question the last time we were here, do we need to, you know, is there any consideration here in other town? Are we giving it any consideration, and the answer I heard was, oh. Um but you know, you can never say it's never gonna happen, right?
All right.
But you know what, when you're, when you're asking the question, you have an answer, or maybe not, maybe.
That question may be asked.
It, it should, they should be asked.
It's transparent, because those are your two options, you put us services or you ask them all, there's no other like magic option.
Right.
I mean, think about what would happen if we run into a serious, this, that. Run into a serious downfall in our global economy or regional economy, and you know, it's done the Yaman's job to do some cutting this year, but what about five years in a row?
Right.
What about three years in a row? How is that fair? I think it's just good practice to have this as a right of discussion. That when override, when cuts have to occur, there should be an answer, we don't think we need to do an override because of the following.
Right.
It's all leadership.
I agree.
We're good, we got three yeses?
Yeah, I just had forgotten Nancy, where, where this.
It's coming from me, because I, I teach this as well, as well, but and it's when I talk to my students, it's like, what is the trigger point? In some communities, it's every two to three years, they do it as a true-up, another community, they wait till it got so bad, and it's like not doing any rate increases and then doing a twenty percent rate increase, but when do you have that conversation? So to me, it's important to be in the financial policies, that there be a discussion, there be a trigger for a discussion, not to cause one to happen, but to have the discussion.
Okay. It's just.
It's healthy.
Okay. But to be fair, I think it's, when we get to, we, we could've talked about it tonight, when we realize we're not filling a whole bunch of positions. The good news is, we're not, well, we are cutting some positions, we're not filling them, I guess, potentially filling, but I think we'll all know it in our discussions, when we've reached a point where, whoa.
Yeah.
We, there's no alternative here but to consider it, and by considering it, I, I just think it's a normal part of discussions. I guess maybe if you feel better that it's, it's written somewhere, but I, I guess my question is, at what point did we say, oh, now we have to put an override, I, I don't, I don't know.
To me, it's more, it can be a political football, that maybe someone doesn't wanna take it up and be the one that brought forward an override. I'm not, I just wonder, from my perspective, there should be some type of trigger within the financial policies that says, okay, we've reached a point where we're now cutting into our critical services, whatever those are, we should at least have a discussion, and then this is why, to James, why we didn't move forward, we would take them.
Right, focused on critical services and personnel.
Yeah, critical, I know what you're saying, but what really is, it's, I mean, again, these are still policies.
I mean, if Jim came to us with the budget and you came to us with a budget that said we have to cut five police officers, I think we'd all be talking override. Do we have to do it? Um but it would have to.
I think by having it in the.
Go ahead.
By having it in the policy. Imaginary board five years from now decides they just wanna eliminate their department. Nancy then now has the authority to say, our policies require, so now have this discussion, I mean, it's just another tool outside of this.
Exactly, it's like a sales.
I think you were thinking as a rational, you know, citizen, who's trying to do her job properly. This is for, oh, I wanna, I'm gonna get re-elected, I promise no new taxes, override, uh we should just talk about it. But I have to talk about it because then our policy, it just kind of forces that person's hand, maybe, I don't know.
I, I, I think I have a lack of imagination, I'm sorry, so I'm not gonna make a sticky.
Nerd, nerd, off things, Karen, I, I respect that.
It's probably unneeded, but you don't want it.
Yeah, if, if, it's, I don't wanna, I believe there'd be argument.
All right, so those top three, we're good, capital projects, expenses prior to emergency, legal mandate, or unforeseen circumstance, negative service impacts, everything must be part of the five-year capital. All recommended capital projects must be part of the five-year capital.
Isn't that what we're doing almost now?
Almost, oh, things pop up in the fall, so the, the late um submission by widows walk. When Ian said, you know, this is the first year of in-house maintenance, and they're finding what equipment they need, and he said, you know, I'm gonna need some equipment, so off of an article in the spread, I'm like, eh, it should've been on the five-year capital plan. And if the financial policies are, are accepted as written, you won't be able to do that, because it's not emergency or unforeseen, just poorly planned. So that's the question.
This, this, I'll be honest, this is the only one that I'm like, I get nervous about, because it's untr- like, what's really unforeseen, and then.
Well, unforeseen is something breaks, like something, somebody takes, your transfer station burns down, you need to buy a bunch of stuff. That's unforeseen.
But that would be called an emergency.
And that would be.
Right, this is truly poorly planned.
It would be, it's, I just hate that there's some opportunity.
Oh, oh, I forgot.
Oh, the, this X, Y, Z building plot, and whatever, no. I don't, I still wanna tie our hands if something really good comes up, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna die on my sword, just don't want, uh it's not the fight we're playing, I'm gonna can't do something amazing, but other than that, I'm fine.
I think you can shoot more than one into this.
The words, emergency, unforeseen.
Unforeseen, unforeseen.
Yes, all right, all right.
It's like the biggest loophole in the world, unforeseen.
It's a good practice.
Yeah, we didn't know that opportunity existed, unforeseen.
There you go, so let's.
So the next two.
So so the next, so then the next one.
Same.
Same thing.
Yep.
Part of the conference capital, guys, part, so number three on that, part of the capital, town will seek to move financial, financial capital improvement, expenses pay as you go.
On the gap.
Yeah, or when it is necessary, the shortest payment schedule. Right?
Yes.
We don't wanna credit card bill twenty years from now.
Right. Yeah.
Policy and capital, Nancy, are done.
Yep.
Debt policy. General fund debt service as a percentage.
I have no problem with any of those.
Not to exceed fifteen percent. Debt service should not exceed fifteen percent.
I mean, if it's that high, we have problems.
Yeah, totally.
Right, anyone?
Nope, not wrong.
Do I wanna make it fourteen point three seven five? Percent, that would be.
And the enterprise is only that high because we're a lot.
Yeah, right.
All right, so sixty percent, that's good, you think that's, this is gonna help?
No, it's hard to do it.
I don't wanna go too fast, people are like, hey.
No, it's, I agree.
Sixty, all right, we're at that one, we're good.
I'm good on everything, reserves.
All right, percentage total debt, and a ten, fifty percent minimum non-compated debt exclusions, let's see, these.
Yes.
Normal.
And I'm knocking them out, because they can be twenty-five year debt, I was gonna say, those are the good ones, yeah.
Correct.
All right, reserve, all good, policy. We're gonna skip to those three for now, because that's where the most. Let's go to the back.
Those are all Riddler.
Well, I think your compliance is compliance.
Oh, right, you're right, I'm sorry.
All right, and the very last one is compliance, which I think is.
Yes, that one.
Government, administration, the budget shall include.
Yes, right.
Going to compliance, right, anyone else have a problem with this compliance?
No.
Okay.
It is, reserve wants to go through. The risks.
All right, it's not even eight o'clock yet, we not gonna figure these out?
Well, yeah, let's go through them all, okay, let's do it.
Reserve policy ace. Alots issued with flexibility to establish additional reserves, as allowed under master law to address other long-term liabilities. Flexibility limits of these funds. Be dictated by actuary development, scheduled for those funds not available, and actuary, the support shall adopt virtual face of experience, shall not exceed the sum of five prior years expense. Nancy, in English.
So an example of this would be the Fed Reserve Fund, the legislation that was created, we decided to adopt it, that particular one has limits within it, but there's all kinds of different um liabilities that you can set up a reserve fund if you are a food time. So we don't know what's gonna come in the future, so this just gives you the, the, it sets the policy that you can move forward with adopted one. And that unless there's something in the statute that will say what the limits are, you get to use an actuary, the five years balance of the expense, so it doesn't end up being this huge little loaded pot of money.
Oh, I got that.
I'd like a nice huge loaded pot of money right now, but.
So can you give me an example of, we know what's that fund, but what, I think you said something else, I missed it.
Uh, uh, um, like, the like only for food time, so like sick and vacation buyouts.
Okay.
So those can be very expensive. So those can be very expensive, most of it's been bargained out. But some communities, you can set up a, um, reserve for that and put money into it, so you don't have to budget for it for year to year or take it from year to year, it's not that much of a deal.
I guess I wouldn't mind seeing a list of potential reserve funds. Um, because, you know, in my imagination, you wouldn't wanna have a reserve fund for the, uh, the building inspector departments, you know, I mean.
Now, it has to, something exists by statute.
And it's, and it's a liability, a financial liability.
But I'll give you a list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Everyone pretty good with that?
Yeah.
One of the few. Number two, the town may, not required, may establish additional reserve funds for long-term liabilities and volatile expenses to provide long-term planning. The combination of those liabilities and costs included, but limited to.
I think, I think it's workers' comp.
Oh, workers' comp, all right.
I think this was the actual reserve policy eight, and I think the one above it was the paragraph on it.
Uh.
So we'll go all part of that place.
So ignore that.
There we go.
All right, so here's the first kind of. Percentage wise, well, we gotta talk about it. Town may maintain a reserve fund balance between 0.05% and 2% enterprise fund. Budget less transfers from other funds, giving general fund subsidies, minimum of 10 to 50,000 when this recommended.
This is the emergency reserve within the operational budgets of the enterprise funds.
I like that.
So this year, you will see every single, um, enterprise fund have an emergency reserve between 10 and 70.
And depending on the magnitude of the enterprise fund.
Yeah, Widdow's Walk is 10, um, sewer has 25, water has 25.
Right, that, I think that's fine, that's healthy.
And it can only be used by a vote of the advisory committee, and it closes out with the budget at the end of the year.
So.
So it's like the reserve fund that the advisory committee controls for the general fund.
Votes elected.
Wait, and vote of the advisory committee?
Yeah, it's just like the reserve fund, uh, reserve fund transfer that you can, that exists in the general fund, that only advisory committee can approve. It's the same for the enterprise funds. They can exist for enterprise funds.
But they don't current.
We do have, we are, we are already doing this for some of them.
Is that reserve fund money coming from operating or it's already the reserve fund as well?
It's part of operating. That's, and until it closes right back out with the budget, that they can't touch it.
So it's pretty, it's pretty, you know, every year, it's re-.
So it's like the 75,000 you, that Jim just explained from the general fund.
Yeah.
That can go a couple of years without us using it or something could happen, and then there's a request to the advisory committee to approve a transfer from the reserve fund. This is the enterprise version of it.
No, but it's not, it's, it's, that's insignificant.
You have a much smaller budgets.
Yeah, yes.
Well, I'm talking about the advisory committee, the 75,000, is that what you've talked, the, the reserve fund?
Well, this is the enterprise fund version of it.
But the advisory has their own, correct?
Well, the general fund has their own, which is the 75,000.
Right.
Right, this would be the enterprise funds.
Yeah, it's one, sorry, you had a question about?
No, I didn't.
Oh, my question was just how do you determine if it's 10,000 or 50,000? It's just your judgment or?
Availability of revenue.
Okay.
So it's a flush enterprise fund and go further than higher.
Okay.
Also, besides the enterprise fund, water waste is a million five budget, don't need a whole bunch, they're not expected to have emergency. Whereas water and sewer.
Yeah.
No, I. Those darned comments.
I'm gonna violate my rule for devil's advocate for a second. So I'm, I'm about how much from operating, you think, for what it is?
10 to 20.
The total over all of them.
Less than 100.
Yes, we're around 100.
All right, so around 100,000, well, there's.
And is it just for the enterprise funds?
Right, which should, they're supposed to be self-sustaining, which I know. So that's an issue, but the 100,000 is money that could be spent.
No, they're from clear receipts.
That was, that was, my question was, so it's not from.
Oh, yeah, I'm not subsidizing.
Set aside their money so they don't get to zero.
That was not, but that's where our features, I thought, right, we're retaining, getting on. Nevermind.
Good question.
Yes, good question. Yeah, I'm good with that one.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And so, so I, I'm assuming, what, what is the town to violate this policy?
It's not the kind of. The advisory committee jail.
No, we're good. Nice.
It's very different, we select one though, but.
The SO.
The SO, and who's the in-?
The hoarser. Well, I think one, it would be in Jim's, um, in the compliance.
Okay.
The statement on the budget would say that the budget is not in compliance with reserve policy two because the water enterprise does not have a reserve, emergency reserve fund.
All right, perfect, okay, good. Let's just use the water for an example, since we just had to raise the rates. Um, so if, if the water, um, enterprise fund may be out of compliance. Does that mean that we have no choice but to? Where are we supposed to find the money?
Well, um, the key one here is the word may.
May.
The town may maintain, I gave you enough.
I've got you now. All right.
So you, you don't have to raise rates to, to put in an emergency reserve fund.
That's, yeah.
I mean, right, the dirty secret of all of this is that, it's really good. Yeah, it's, we're doing this, hey, because we're really good at having policies, and also making sure that they're really good. Operating.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I also, can I add to that, I also think by having these kinds of statements in our policy. It is gonna, it, it, not just us, but future boards gonna ask you to work to the better interest of running of the cash.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
These are all good practices, and the may is, they are okay, fine, but if we can, we should. That's what allows you to face. That a lot of people don't like to face stuff like that, I know, and so this is a good practice.
Got three more.
Cool.
So on the back, policy top one, you know, the money to be generated in quote free cash, end quote shall not be less than 2% or more than 8% of the approved general fund budget, less debit exclusions, the amount of money to be generated in retained earnings shall not be less than 5% or more than 75% of the approved enterprise fund operating budget, less transfers from other funds, including general fund subsidies, or a minimum of quarter million dollars. Let's also, on that one.
This one is a little more difficult. With the free cash, we wanna at least generate free cash, so we need to be conservative enough with our revenue forecast. And we need to encourage budget term debts. Um, but we don't wanna be so conservative that we have an egregious amount of free cash. We don't wanna, you know, do away with services in the name of being conservative, uh, by that. If you didn't do policy three and four, I wouldn't cry about it. Um, policy four, it's always that question of how much retained earnings should each, each enterprise fund actually be generating? See, this year was relatively low. Um, other years it's been relatively high, that gets more into the rate setting. And if you're constantly generating, you know, 30% retained earnings, then your rates are a little bit high unless you're doing something with those retainers, like pumping it back into your infrastructure rather than var. But if you're just rolling large amounts of retained earnings, it takes a question about your rates. So this is just trying to peg a number. But it's a one-size-fits-all, so I said at least a minimum of 250. Actually, to protect it, the, you could buy, there could be a, a, a time when this would not, um, be in compliance. Could be, if you have less seasonal golf enterprise and water waste, especially golf, here we go. We've had three years in a row where we have, um, deficits. And we didn't, we didn't make our retainers. Because we just couldn't generate rubbish.
But we didn't have the, the, the.
We didn't have.
The general fund did not have to build them out?
No, we were able to talk our way out of it with our.
Okay.
But, so that's.
So if we have this policy in place, but we've been in a better position and not have to pocket the.
We wouldn't have been able to control anyways, this is a drug. So these two I'm not married to, it's just, it's trying to establish that you're not creating huge amounts of free cash or retained earnings that is costing someone something, either you're doing away with services or your rates are inflated for something other than kind of create money for capital.
So.
Are we, are we doing that anyways? So, again, but again. It does, it, maybe it's gonna deal with the irrational person, it may or may not.
That would be for the retained earnings, and, I mean, again, that's, that is best practice. I guess from here on, let's establish first principles on the first one. This, this is gonna sound terrible, but why do we want free cash?
We want free cash to be able to invest in our capital plan without encouraging debt.
Mm-hmm. So 2%.
Well, less than.
Not less than 2%, so it's more to, to generate at least 2% of free, I'm just trying to look at the first principles of whether or not.
Yeah.
But not more than 8%.
I like that because for the reasons we've talked about before, it's like, you, exactly what Nancy said, you wanna.
Mean and lean, mean and lean.
Pardon me?
Mean and lean.
Mean and lean, well, you wanna be, you have the appropriate amount of money for what you need to do and not have all this money floating around just in case.
Right.
Since we've gotta find a balance, and you think 2 to 8 makes sense, then I think it's probably the policy. The other one, I, I just don't understand, if it's not less than, but it'd be up to 75%, what's the point? You know, there's just so much flexibility in that.
Well, it tends to be for enterprise funds, and they're all.
Right, they're all over the board, so I, I, I think policy number four to me is not really meaningful, um, I would say that we don't need that one. But I, I think three makes sense for that angst about, you know, why we don't know this cash is not using it anymore.
It's, well, but then it's 8% too high, we actually had 8%. We've done 8.
Yeah, we've gotten close.
That's a lot, so.
We're up around 5 to 6% right now. So if you had a, for whatever reason, you had a really booming year. You might, you might hit that.
Well, are you suggesting in that, let's just pick on the call, enterprise fund?
I think that's what we've done.
If, if, if. Could someone, you know, decide they're going to sue us because we have too much in free cash and that we should reduce the, the rates of the golf course?
No. Well, that would be a subsidy, and I, I think you could just say we don't subsidize the enterprise funds, they're self-supporting.
But this policy refers to the enterprise fund.
But it's two different policies.
It's three, two, one. Three and four is a general fund.
Three is general fund, four is enterprise.
Yeah, general.
Yeah, so this one.
Yeah, I think three, but I'm asking about four.
Okay.
I, I, I think in, in four, the slide there, the 5 to 75, I think is appropriate for the, the way enterprise funds can, can go one way or the other. There are, they can be volatile.
Right, right, right. I guess you don't wanna put us in a position where all of a sudden we go rate payers, whether they're the water rate payers or the sewer rate payers or whoever who decided that, you know, well, you violated this financial policy and therefore you should be reducing rates.
Uh, the way this is written, I would think it's very hard to violate this, there's so.
Because it's 75%.
So much flexibility.
Yeah.
Which is why I think it's moved and to your point, we're silent about that, they don't run that risk, yeah.
Okay.
So you're not against.
No.
Feeling it.
Feeling four.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm actually not against it, it's really does.
It doesn't bother me to have it there, it just, I, I'll be able to you to tell me what you think.
I, I don't have a problem either way, um, if you, if you have problems with the range, you could always have a minimum of 250,000. Or you can, we have nothing now. Right, right. So it's kind of like, because of the wide range of these funds. It's hard to do a one-size-fits-all.
Right.
But it can also be a practice of the board that you wanna see X and then we add it to the policy. So if you're uncomfortable with it, I'd say knock it out. If you feel it doesn't add value. Anything here that causes discomfort immediately.
We'd always come back and adjust it in six months or ten months.
Are you saying knock out the whole thing or knock out the 250?
Just.
Reserve four.
The whole number four.
The whole, not the reserve.
Just for that.
And to keep three, yeah.
All right, so we're all good on three.
Yeah.
Let's table four, I wanna keep the ball.
Yeah.
Okay, we're at the five-year line, we gotta punch this in.
Fair enough.
Yes.
OPEB.
Last one, please.
Now, there's a little stabilization one. So the cash flow fund, it's OPEB liability, trust fund, the attributable to general fund support employees at a minimum of 2%. And assessment. Yada, 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 yada. Well, no, it's, and then it shall further fund other OPEB uh, support employees at a minimum of 10%, but the net accrued liability is identified in the most recent report.
And based on what you've funded, you're already there.
Right, I, I, it's healthy, so this is saying you need to do a minimum of two. And then once you get, hit these triggers are there, a bunch of allocation shall be applied to OPEB liability. We follow that, we're doing a minimum of 2%.
Well, yeah, I'll be with this one.
Okay.
All right.
The town shall maintain the stabilization fund at least 3% of operating budget, loss status solutions with a maximum of 100%.
I don't think.
That, that's a great idea, think of this.
Yeah, the, um, we never get to 20%. And there's, there used to be, in the stabilization fund statute, there used to be a limit where you could go and you could handle 10% of your general fund budget. But I think there needs to, we've always said like, how big should we build it, because we have the annual article, before we say, that's enough. And I think having a stopping point at 20, that's enough, and then you need to move it to another liability or you, you just continue your article.
I was just gonna ask that question, so where's the excess code? Or would you have to have an underwriting?
No, you, what you could do is right now, why you wouldn't either, you either wouldn't levy it. Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't levy it, which just means you lose it for the one year and you have it available to you the following year. Or you could direct that rather than to stabilization fund, to the capital stabilization fund. And start building up your capital situation.
Okay.
So the, so then, the reserve policy four is the only outstanding, when people went through. Or anything else in the back? Concerning.
Sorry, I'm sealed.
No, I did not.
Does anyone have anything else through these policies?
Do we entertain a motion?
Well, the, the only thing we have to do is, are we keeping four or are we? Killing it.
I thought we're just gonna kill it for now.
And we got over that. Yeah, if we kill it for now, is that still gonna help?
Yeah, yeah, we'll just remember that.
It'll help the operator and everything else.
Yeah. Do you wanna come back?
So I, I, I recommend, Karen, again, we'll put, put a vote in motion to convince the lady to relax.
Well, you can have.
Desirable, you can just get.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And it's barely sufficient.
You can just add except for reserve policy four.
Page.
This can do it turn me off.
I almost hear the hell out of it.
I think we look to adopt the presented financial policy on that revenue self-supporting operating from enterprise fund, capital reserves, debt investment and continuing disclosure to replace those adopted in April 2012 and amended in April 2020, except for which one was in our reserve policy four.
By Ms. Harrison, but second, second button is, can't feel all those in favor.
All right.
All right, as we down this.
Four years, this is monumental.
Said it, we should have gotten flowers for him.
We said appropriate to. We said that about Tony, he's not, I say, God, we're gonna do it.
For a top.
No, it's not a secret.
Only took 13 meetings, I love it.
Tony, if you're listening, you're just. All right. All right, that's gonna feel good, right?
That's awesome.
It should be a nice leather bum, a leather bum.
I'd like to pick a bow.
Publication, okay.
Everybody pick a bow.
All right. Now let's review bylaw policies, no, sorry, special town meeting. November 18th, recommendation for CPC, and then we have the sign heard.[1788.34]
I do have three policies.
I'm sorry, so recommendation CPC.
That was my fault, I thought you voted the CPC and you didn't.
I'm like, oh, yeah, I didn't. You talked about it, you only voted capital that night.
All right, so. So this is to recommend article eight, which is.
Well, the the motion is to, the, I never know that, which which is number eight?
So what done it?
Oh, it's the, the.
Community preservation.
The bike.
Bike racks.
Bike racks, um, the bike is studied, the water high, we think, um, studied and the two point, um, two million for town share of Cedar Point. To the table.
Oh.
Right.
Thank you, Mr..
Okay, anyone, questions or concerns about any of these?
No.
A lot of motion.
Move to recommend article eight of the eleven, it's a more special family relevant to the recommendations of the, uh, community preservation. Second.
I just can't say what is. No, it's in favor, aye, two unanimous. Right, to sign these. So.
Nothing.
I'm supposed to take what, one to the.
Consent.
Consent, I'll take consent. And I'll take capital.
I don't.
Who would like? Gee, I wonder who might take CPC?
I guess I might. Unless someone really feels.
This is not harder.
All right, Ms. Conley can take. New preservation, who would like the social regional?
Who knows about schools? Um.
All.
I don't care. I think any of them, I believe.
I'm just trying to remember how complicated it is.
It's basically rallying marshfield.
That's a.
It would, it would totally dead. Based on all the.
All right, well, so we've got one, we've got five, we've got five. Janie, out of the last five, which one do you want?
Whichever's coming from a simple.
Susan, which one do you want?
I don't, I don't care, I'll take.
In all but dry.
Oh, right, right.
See, I've never written up.
All right.
Or there's any other clear ones before.
The key is to show us the advisory.
Time to.
Oh, we're gonna.
So if somebody wants to show me that, please.
James, get it.
I don't wanna do the fingerprint, obviously, because I have.
Susan, volunteer for that.
I don't mind.
I'll do firefighters, your firefighters, your fingerprinting.
And I'll do the other bylaw.
And I'll do.
I'll do school.
You'll do social regional?
Sure.
And let people try and find something.
I'll do, I don't mind. I'm serious, I'll take whatever one.
All right, how about you do consumption and fingerprinting?
I will do increased liquor consumption and fingerprint.
Okay.
And a half.
And you've got CPC, do you wanna do licensing authority or down to license?
Licensing, look, that's just.
You.
I don't wanna be on that page. You take.
You take license, you take licensing authority.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's all I have.
All right, so I'm this, um, consent and capital CPC. Wait, you're doing school again?
You said.
I already have a school.
So you're in three, you're only in one.
Sorry, I have one.
Not anymore.
Oh, do I have now?
Consent, do you wanna give up? Because you have three.
I'll, whatever, I'll do whatever one.
All right, you're.
I was trying to consumption.
Okay, licensing and consumption.
Um, so I'm doing school.
And fingerprinting.
And fingerprinting.
Done.
Hopefully he'll come with, um, they'll come and present.
Is there a template that we have that we can work off of?
No, I'm sure.
What that, that's very. We aim for clarity.
We aim for clarity, succinct.
It doesn't.
It's not like we forget to call. And we don't have the print right.
Mr. Goodrow, would you like to, um.
We don't have to write things?
I don't know. I don't know, license.
The written.
So.
No.
We just, we just do it.
Speak it.
Yeah, you're gonna, yeah, show up and.
Speak for my heart.
Know all about that. The advisory book is already done.
Okay.
So we we just.
Well.
Now, speaking of.
We'll talk.
So there are two ways to file a humble petition, one is via a voluntary meeting, the second is petition the governor to file a humble petition on behalf of the community. I talked a couple, a couple of board members all the time about how we will need additional liquor license for North Situate. So my initial thought was that we will put this on in the spring for town meeting and petition the legislature for additional liquor licenses. Since that time, but after we closed along with the special town meeting, we actually had, uh, one gentleman come in looking for a liquor license to open in the old river shed spot. We've had a person come in looking for a liquor license to open a seasonal type of patio in North Situate. But we also know the development that's going in at, uh, Salon Taj in North Situate. They are building to have a restaurant, but they won't put it in until storage comes, so there are three right there, two which. The town could give away as soon as we had the approval to do it. So, um, rather than wait for the town meeting and maybe have some of those people walk away. I thought that we could both petition the governor to file a humble petition requesting, I put seven, I thought. That would be a good number, we know we have at least three, that'd be out there, probably a couple more, uh. Get the ball rolling on that, maybe get the old river shed up and running quickly, uh, the business in North Situate is still being worked on, we could give them a seasonal license because they want to make the patio. But they prefer to have an all alcohol license because their plan is the same, once store comes, they're gonna build a restaurant with, uh.
And that's the oldest Jamie's.
That's the old change, yeah.
Location for those that don't know.
So I I figure it would suit, the governor will file for us, we'll send it in and see if the legislature does it.
So you're gonna put that area where you'll be.
That's a, a plan they're working on, yes.
Yeah.
There's a similar one in Cohasset.
Oh, someone, someone goes by the way.
Fairway.
It's right next to Lenny's by the way.
It's split rock, Maryland, it's by the way, yeah.
That's how it works.
Split rock, yeah.
Fairway, fairway.
So we know we we definitely have a demand for these. Cohasset is actually looking to put it on their special town meeting to do the same thing, so if we both go forward, we can both follow the legislature about it, but, um. By the legislature limits what we can have is behind me, but they do.
That control thing.
I agree, I agree.
A hundred percent. Well, there's, there's still big money, you know, depending on where you are in terms of liquor licenses, I mean, not here, but.
The only, the only here that I remember being sold was, uh, the voyage package store license, they sold that.
That was, that was a very complicated situation.
But, uh, with a lot of money because, but in Boston, there there are half a million dollars for.
Well, we don't have any left, so like if you're, then you have North Situate, wouldn't know.
No, I I I'm not.
I'm not fully making.
And the river shed empty right now, I I talked to a couple of the the proposals, I said, why not just bear and wind to get open? I said, we need all alcohol because we need trulies and and spritzers and and all the other things that are very popular with the the younger generation today.
Yeah.
It's not a bear and wine crowd anymore.
Yeah, lots of calories.
Don't want to have alcohol.
Right.
Should I make a motion?
Yes.
Move to recess if you're ready.
Well, if I could just say, here, you know, I'm not against liquor licenses at all. I I'm with you, I don't know why to say concise, who gets how many? But I will say that as a general matter, that this board has already had to entertain people talking to us about the problems some sometimes that happen. When there are a concentration of liquor licenses in a fairly small area. So I just want people to understand, well, you were here, weren't you going to invite the people from the Harvard came in?
Certainly.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I I do think we owe them, you know, the 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 people who have issues, that we will be sensitive to that as well. And, uh, you know, it, so.
I don't, I don't see these two issues as the same, I see this as future planning and I agree with you. I think we still need to have some type of a discussion and I also know a letter went out to some of those establishments on behalf of the chair. Reemphasizing and I know I've been down there and something come up to me and said, we're gonna do anything we can, if they want us to close the windows, we're gonna close the windows. If somebody tells us to do something, we're gonna do it. And I I I'm very sensitive to that too, but I don't think that really has a bearing on going to the legislature to ask for seven future licenses, some maybe quickly, some maybe not, who knows?
Well, I I respectfully disagree with you, I think now is the time for us to to let the public know that we understand the 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 consequences of granting liquor licenses. I have no problem with advanced planning, in fact, immediately when I saw this, I thought, well, if. You know, North Situate, hopefully if things get resolved up there, we're gonna want to be alive and vibrant, we don't wanna be stuck with saying, sorry, you can't have a restaurant out there because we have no liquor licenses left. But I, but I do, but I do think it's worth just letting the public know that we we understand the consequences of granting these licenses and, you know, we're not asking for something that's. Extraordinary, but then it takes some planning to.
It's gonna take a little while to get this.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
We're.
And that to the legislature, we all know is.
It's like an act of law.
It's like an act of laws.
Yes, but do you, you people.
I agree.
All right, um, I but I I am. Um, I am working with people, we're we're not doing this hastily, it's still a process to go through.
Right.
Um, it's just gives us option, we are gonna be thoughtful and, you know, certainly not drop the ball or down or.
It's not a wild limit here.
Right.
Definitely not.
Okay.
All right.
I just.
Yeah.
No, it's good.
Correct, we can go point.
Move to request the governor to file a humble petition on behalf of the town of Situate, requesting an additional seven on premise.
Section.
Section twelve restaurant, all alcohol beverage licenses.
Second.
Moved, uh, Mr. Gilmore, so everybody, Ms. Canfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Nancy's gonna declare some surplus.
The the same list that you saw at the last meeting, but as soon as you approve some surplus, we find more. So the items in red are the additional items that were declared after you declared surplus.
If I do declare.
So we have even more surplus we can sell.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah, our yard.
That was good, declarer.
Move to declare the attached listing of items as surplus for auction.
Ms. Kendall, second by.
Aye.
Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anomalous. Next, we have. Board and committee appointment, there, this committee can have, this this person was already on, just missed the deadline. Basically replying, even though they're replying. Uh, been on before, there's a spot, more than spots open. We need people for this, any objections?
No.
Love the motion, but.
Move to appoint Kathleen, move Gaisel, apologies if I got that wrong, to the, uh, Citroen Cultural District Committee for a term of two years with the predecessor's name.
Ms. Kendall, second by.
Second.
Ms. Conley, who are the? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anomalous. Extreme layer it up.
It's just a new one.
Juhar.
Oh, yeah, Juhar. Good, I recognize the name. Um, move to recruit three, approve the renewal during the their license for Gerard Langus.
Second, full second by Mr. Gilmore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anomalous. All right, liaison reports, the in force on this. Oh, yes, yay's way.
Oh, yay's way, um, library met last night for the first of two meetings that is part of the commended NBLC. By their strategic planning, um, there are probably twenty-five people from the community that are serving on this grant, that's a big job. Bylaw review, uh, met and approved, the free bylaws proposed for special town meeting. And will recontinue to December to start the review of all of the general bylaws. And, um, veterans advisory, two things, uh, they will be doing a late on lunch on Veterans Day at the senior center, which they maybe got the notice last time. Um, and also, uh, Jim and I met independently with the folks proposing the John Hunter Memorial, the image of, um, uh. I don't know, John Hunter. And they have, um. Agreed that, uh, they will provide Jim with, uh, an update of where they are about every two weeks so that we can keep the board informed of other processes. So there's still about fifty percent of the finally to, um, to secure before they are ready to move forward, but they, uh. You know, they they're aggressively still pursuing that and it's still in the works, but, um, we felt it was premature to do a memo of understanding because. They still have a long way to go before, um, in terms of. Bringing climate changes before the whole for final approval. That's what I have. Um, I know we're not supposed to discuss things that really lead on report, but I partly disagree. I think you do need a memo of understanding that the town provides to the John Hunter Memorial, uh, group, um. And it should contain certain terms and conditions and that's just my opinion.
Well, we can request the chair to put on a, uh, uh, meeting so that we can address that.
Then I'm formally asking on the agenda. Thank you. And I have liaisons, I got the COVID shot last week, folks, it nearly killed me.
Really?
Oh, that's brutal.
Oh.
I like the numbers, well, I wasn't liaising last week.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
It was a bad shot.
Um. Uh, well, I talked about planning. Planning.
Yeah, I have a bunch of reports, that's.
All right, let you go through them.
Yeah, when we go through all of them, beach commission, um, they are looking at the. Portal bodies. Um, please to pass something in the next couple of weeks, um, and then they also did a beach grass planning, um, this weekend, which was very successful, beautiful.
Did they?
Taggedy, ten dozen plants, I'd say it's fun, lots of people showed up and we were done even before the pizza got there. We were so efficient.
Hungry.
And hungry, more at Lincoln, um. Construction's begun on the parking area, which is exciting, um, and the committee has been meeting with the auctioneer to understand that process. On surplus and whatnot, Waterways meets tomorrow, Shellfish Advisory, we, they are, the oysters are being harvested first this week. Friday, I believe here's a good date and there is a public, um, or we're having a, um. Little invitation only, um, tasting? Yes, tasting, which I did too, thank you, email, um, and Melanie's is doing that. And then recreational shop, there's just gonna be open on, um, November eleventh, so that is very exciting, um. And then planning ZBA, um, accessory dwelling implementation, um, that was a, um. Meeting yesterday that the state held a Zoom, there were over six hundred people that showed up to listen to that, which was very important. And then Andrew and I met with, um, planning and Jim and, uh. Bunch of other folks, uh, today. And, um, they are working, there's a committee working through, um, draft changes to I R bylaw. Um, which will, um, the, I guess, the, I should say the complexity of this whole thing is that the implementation for this is February second, twenty twenty-five.
Listen to this, this is classic.
Which does, which, which is mandated that towns implement it, but no town will have their, um, town meeting before that in order to approve a bylaw. And their towns need to change their bylaws to come into compliance, so there's a kind of gap, they've been asking. So they were very vocal with that on the call the other day, um, and I mean, the only solution is for the, um, legislature to delay the bylaw's implementation. For some extent, because towns could come into compliance by, uh. It, you know, probably by July one, but, um, February second, I don't know how they come up with that date, it's not, doesn't jive with anybody's town meetings.
Susan, Susan left off, but I was about to have me promulgate the relationship.
Yeah, and I was gonna also say, yes, the other part is there's gonna be regulations, the state is going to. Issue regulations, but before they issue regulations, they would have draft regulations and public comment period, which they have not released that yet. And the most of the real important things in those regulations are like the definitions and how, um. How the towns can must be, but right up there by those, because you need definitions for bylaws, so we're in a little bit of a. Uh, sticky situation, I see, um, I have a zone too, but we're in. Uh, sticky situation, I see, um, that is on too, but we're in a sticky situation on this, but we're doing the best we can, and. We are ahead of the curve as far as other towns, so if that gives you any like flaws, we are ahead in, in drafting bylaws.
And planning is working very hard, doing excellent job.
They're doing a great job.
To, to make sure that our town is protected, uh, to make sure that we have, you know, what we need to do, move forward again. How classic, no regulations, you have to comply, but, but do it my favor, or you're gonna have something. Love it.
Yes.
Hey, I want to thank the planning board for getting out of the old department.
Yeah, the planning, yeah, right, the, um. Yes. The department and the committee looking into it, because it's building and planning, because building is going to have to. Um, and so I will have to enforce it.
Janie.
A couple things, you know, the students that were gracing our town from. The Celtic soil have left and gone home. I think you've all seen Brenda's correspondence about what a great success that was. And we're looking forward to maybe doing something, they will be for, uh, somewhere close to St. Patrick's Day. Another kind of fundraiser to help with our kids going back, you just had one.
She's the best, isn't she?
Yeah, she's just.
She's fabulous.
Very creative woman, the, uh, historical commission is gonna send us some document. About asking to harmonize the departments in town to communicate with them, it seems like they're being, they're chasing. Demolitions of seventeenth century structures that have been alike, and they don't think they're getting enough information from our departments. Give you a heads up on that, there will be some letter coming to us. Um, yeah, yeah, also, uh, I had one other thing in my head, it ran out just now. Uh, I do have a piece of correspondence here, so maybe it'll come back around. All right, just correspondence. Yeah, I, I have one correspondent, it's, it's a letter from, uh. Copy of a letter to, to us, uh, as well as Secretary Rebecca Tepper, Executive Office of Energy Environmental Affairs. It's from, um. The Papastrotas family dock issue. It's a notification, if you want to look at it, environmental notification E N F with attachments about the construction of a dock. And it's off river. In Hummerock. So, I, it's just to take notice, I'm sure, everybody in the world is top here, so you can take a look at that if you like. Um, it's bothering me, because I can't think of the other. Oh, yes, I, Mr. Chairman, can we put on, on a future agenda, sooner than later? The final review and adoption of the language as proposed by the S D E I for hatred?
So we. Corporate latest.
Yeah, I gave you all copies at the last meeting, and I just neglected to get it down in an agenda, so we can get that on an agenda, because then we can distribute it to. The, the appropriate town, uh. Fellow.
People.
Yeah, and then I also gave you a hot copy of something that's being distributed from the Citroen Food Pantry.
Yes.
It's kind of a catchy, nice little informational thing, those, like, that's the kind of literature, and I know, uh, our town administrator worked something up for the, the, uh, transfer station for me to look at, for me to look at. But that's the kind of information, I think, is encouraging to get out into the public. Uh, easy to read, clean, it's very efficient, both sides are right to the fact of the matter, and it's very low cost. Um, so we could take a look at that too, and now I've said what I think I need to say.
Yeah, I heard you.
Think of motion for nets, acceptance of nets.
Motion to accept that is written and submitted.
Uh, could we take that, which I also think we can, no one's saying I can't.
Okay, well, you can just say that from the February twenty second, February twenty fourth.
As amended, move by, uh, Mr. Gilmore, second by Ms. Cantle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to return.
Summit.
Move by Ms. Harrison, second by. Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, morning.
All those in favor?
Aye.